Button pushed and ready to go. All right, welcome this morning. Before we start on our other, our Board of County Commission meeting, we do have a Board of Equalizations meeting. And we have a number of items on that agenda. We have six items on there. The first one is to approve Board of Equalizations Assessors Approved Review Process Report. Any questions on that?
No.
None from me.
Move that we approve, regular agenda item number one.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve agenda item number one. All in favor say aye.
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 That passes three zero. Number two is to approve or deny a petition to the Board of Equalization for a hearing appeal of proper evaluation as stated.
Bert. Hi. Good morning. Bert Harvey, Tax Administration Office. The very first one is recommend approval. Basically, based on petition, we feel like this could fall under the extraordinary circumstances and also possibly medical exemption clause. So, the Board's office recommend approval on this first petition. And this would be for the full merits of the, of the appeals. This wouldn't be just like factual error, this would be, you know, to actually hear the whole appeal.
Okay, a motion to be in order?
Move that we approve, regular agenda item number two.
Second.
And a motion and a second to approve agenda item number two. All in favor say aye.
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 That passes three zero.
Okay, the second one, the petitioner was, stated they were out of town for work during the filing period. And while we can certainly sympathize, that has not historically been a reason that the state tax mission has allowed to file appeal late. We have folks who are on missions that have filed appeals late and we've denied it, it's gone before the state tax mission, the state tax mission has upheld that denial. So, obviously, just to stay consistent, we're obviously recommending denial on this one because of that.
Okay, I have no questions on the other questions.
I have no questions on that, in fact. Are, do we need to go through each one of these?
Uh, we don't have to, I mean...
It's a similar narrative for the remaining items that you're denying on essentially the same grounds in each case.
Yes, basically, on most of these, yeah.
And I, and I don't have any questions on the remainder as well.
Okay.
Me either.
Okay, so, I would move that we deny regular agenda items number three through six.
Second.
I got a motion and a second to deny agenda items three through four, five, and six. All in favor say aye.
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 That passes three zero, thank you. Last motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're now adjourned from that meeting and we're gonna pause for a second as we switch the recording. Ready? Okay, we're now in a board, in our commission meeting. And we have our published agenda. And as always, we start with a prayer reading or thought. And we had a volunteer this morning for the, for the prayer reading or thought, Kyle Palmer. Are there any volunteers that would lead us in the, the Pledge of Allegiance? Okay, I'll lead us in the pledge, go ahead Kyle.
All right, thank you so much. I'd like to just share an excerpt from Thomas Merton's Thoughts in Solitude, he was a Catholic theologian. "My Lord God, I have no idea where I am going. I do not see the road ahead of me. I cannot know for certain where it will end, nor do I really know myself. And the fact that I think that I am following your will does not mean that I am actually doing so. But I believe that the desire to please you does in fact please you, and I hope I have that desire in all that I am doing. I hope that I will never do anything apart from that desire, and I know that if I do this, you will lead me by the right road, though I may know nothing about it. Therefore, I will trust you always, though I may seem to be lost and in the shadow of death. I will not fear for you ever with me, and you will never leave me to face my perils alone. The right choices are seldom easy or popular. Let us face them with courage and make these choices anyway, as we never make our choices alone. Amen."
Amen.
Thank you.
All right, if you'll stand with me and recite the pledge, please.
Pledge of Allegiance, due to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we go into our, building our agenda, we do have a public hearing. This public hearing is to consider the disposal of significant parcel of real estate that the county owns, and we'll have Richard Nelson kind of describe where that is. This public hearing, that, that is, if anybody has any comments about this, we are, we're looking at disposing of its property, and so, please come forward after the presentation if you'd like to speak to it.
All right, thank you Commissioners. This is the, the property known as Equestrian Park, out in the Lehigh Highland American Fork area. It's actually an island of county, surrounded by those three cities. It's about thirty-seven acres. We have, county actually acquired this property back in the nineteen-sixties as a gravel pit, operated as a gravel pit for a number of years. In the late nineteen-nineties, early two thousands, it was developed into a park. There were some improvements that were made there on the, on the site. If you get in here a little closer, you can see, there's a large indoor arena in this location, there's an outdoor arena in this location, there are four pavilions and a playground area down on the lower part of it. You can kind of see the boundary out in here, it's just one large parcel, I'm going around. Several months ago, the commission asked us to, to do a little bit of evaluation on it, we had an appraisal done on the property, I'll let you discuss that as you'd like to there. The property here to the south is owned by American Fork City. That's actually a part that they have, the, the pond area here is actually owned by Lehigh City, and then there's, there's homes surrounding it on the, on the north and west. It's on sixty-eight hundred west county address, it's nine hundred west American Fork. If you're familiar with where the, the Costco is, it's just up the street from, from the Costco there, a little bit, about a mile north of State Street. Other questions that you have or other items you'd like me to address on it? That kind of set the stage for us.
Okay.
Rob Moore County turns off, let me just mention, we also, this is considered a significant parcel because it's over ten acres, and also, my office did notice this up for a public hearing today, in accordance with state law.
Okay, this, this being a public hearing, are there any, any thoughts or comments from anyone in the audience? Okay. Let's go ahead and close the public hearing.
A move that we close the public hearing?
Oh.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion and a second to close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The public hearing is now closed. We'll now go into building our agenda. We have a number of published items on consent and regular agenda, and we'll go down through and put everything, right now, onto consent, either be ratified, approved, or adopted as stated in the agenda, unless we pull it off for, for discussion purposes. The, on the published consent agenda, number one, if we could strike that one, there's no documents on that, on that number one, that's okay to do?
Yep.
Okay.
And then, uh, if we could hold number nine, and I don't have any others on consent, is there any others need to be held?
I don't have any on consent.
None from me.
Okay. Okay, I did not see them last night as I was going down through them. Maybe we'll just leave it for next week. Number, let's see, starting with the regular agenda, if we could hold number one. Number three needs, needs some action unless, unless we're all in agreeance with the recommendation from the, from the commission as a denial. Does anybody else, does anybody need to hold number three?
I don't.
No.
Okay, so we can leave that on there then as a denial, following the recommendation of the planning commission.
On, on number two?
Number two, do you want to?
I, I mean, for me, I, I'm not sure that the public hearing, well, let's just hold, let's just hold number two.
Hold it, okay. Hold number two. Number, if we could hold number four and number five. I think that's everything else.
Yep.
Okay. Going back to number nine, on consent, which is to approve an agreement with the, for a legislative alcohol policy summit for the speaker. I, I don't understand why, why we have to pay for the speaker. If it's a legislative policy summit, maybe I just don't understand what that, what that means or what's going on there, and second, why we can't find somebody that we don't have to fly, and also, when I look at the, when I look at the contract, it's blank. There's, there's, it's not filled out at all, there's no, there's no dollar amount, there's an attachment to it, attachment B, but all that talks about is up to five hundred dollars for light purposes, but the attachment is, is blank, nothing in it.
When did you receive that copy of the contract?
I looked at it last night.
Right, okay. So there was an original contract that was uploaded, that was supposed to be supplemented, but then, instead of that, Pat Bird, who was working on this contract, had the original one removed from the system. Oh, it is there?
Yeah.
Does it have?
So it wa, it was uploaded.
Okay, so it, it looks like he did get it, because he had the original one removed, and then it had it re-uploaded with the other documents. It says it's compensating in accordance with attachment B, let me go back to B.
Well, see, I'm looking at it right now, I just barely pushed on it, and I see the contract on here where there's no name, there's no contract person, there's no costs.
Hmm. Let me kind of see if this is the same.
No, that's interesting. Yours, mine, mine is filled, the app is, does not have the filled.
Yeah, I don't know.
Let's reach for a copy, this is what it looks like.
It sounds like it just may be some kind of electronic transmission issue.
Which last year, or last week, you had, there was another issue?
Yeah.
You had a blank document. It was showing up on, on mine.
Yeah, the only, besides that blank document that I see.
That's a good reason to ask for concerns.
I see attachment B, that just has, has the cost on it, so, ma, maybe if we can address the first, the first question is, why, why, why do we have to pay for this? What does Utah County have to pay for?
We actually have about fourteen thousand dollars in revenue support from other sources to fund this conference. This is something that we've organized in the past. We already have approved agreements for at least three speakers for this conference to fly in, one other from Las Vegas, one from California, one from Denver, Colorado. It's just something that, we've got the expertise and, and interest to organize, and the state legislature, Representative Tim Hox and Senator Jerry Stevenson asked us if we would do this, so this is kind of ancient history. We're way down the road in, in getting the conference organized, and it happens a week from Friday. So, this is the last speaker, we always have some struggles getting representation from the alcohol industry, and this gentleman's coming from the Wine and Spirits Wholesalers Association to talk about state and federal policy issues, specific to that part of the system in Utah. Does that answer your question?
So, so is this, so is this from the legislators, they're, they're wanting to hold this conference for legislative policy purposes?
Yes, the...
Why doesn't the state pay for it?
I don't have an answer for that question, I don't know. So, but like I said, we have an interest in doing this ourselves, because we don't have a whole lot of opportunity to get the public health and safety aspects of alcohol policy in front of the legislature, so historically, this has really worked out well to have both sides of the issue presented at the same time, because, but, in the, at the end of the day, it really impacts what the Sheriff's Department does, what the county attorney and public defender have to do, and what we do. So, that's one of the primary reasons why we do this.
Okay.
If I heard you correctly, people are paying to attend.
Yes.
And so, in, in essential, really, you could say, this is not being funded out of the general fund, because the conference is paying for it.
No, it's not being funded out of county general fund, no.
So it's passed through then?
Yes.
So, we, we get reimbursed for it?
Yeah, that's the last, last piece of this, is there'll be a revenue agreement coming from DABC, we partnered with them to write a grant to the National Alcohol Beverage Control Association for a significant amount of, of the funding, ten thousand dollars.
Okay.
And that's been approved.
That gives me a lot more comfort on it. I didn't, I didn't know that, of course, without seeing the contract, I have no idea.
And then, Ubec is also contributing up to four thousand dollars, and then we have a bunch of funds in reserve from the last time we tried to do this and had to cancel it, so, it's paid for.
So then, the only question, the only question I have is, is that with the contract that we have in place, and with the monies that are gonna be reimbursed, we've, we've got that all tied down contract wise?
Yes.
Anthony, that's...
Have we got the, we're still waiting for the DA?
Yeah, we, we've got to work on that today.
Yeah, we, we still, so there's still a pending contract that we still need to get done.
It's a revenue contract, but the funding's there, the grant's been approved, and DABC's in possession of the funds, they just have to, we have to do, transmit it to us. Looked at Mr. Shawcraft about that yesterday.
So we could, we could, we could pass this in, in accordance with the, with the revenue equal, equal to coming back?
Yes.
Okay. All right, and a motion to be, if we could do that with, I, I would prefer we do it with, you know, tied that there is, there is a, a revenue stream that comes back that offsets it. Okay.
I would move that we approve regular agenda item number nine, with the understanding that this conference will have, will generate revenue that will cover the speaking fees.
Second.
I got a motion and a second to approve the agreement as stipulated, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? That passes three zero.
Thank you.
Okay, on number one, is to approve proper tax actions, contain the recommendation letter. On that one. Makes me worried that I, that I have all the information now that my, I get blank copies. It's still, it's still loading, sorry.
I hope it's not blank.
No, it's not, I was looking at it last night, so it shouldn't be blank.
Dave Shawcraft filling in for Paul Jones.
There are, there are three of them that I'd like to at least discuss. One is, is Mighty Light and Utah Dental Center, and Chris and Sarah Miles, I believe is the name. Almost, it's a big document. Okay. So if you can go through, are you first enough to go through these, Dave?
I, I believe so, Mighty Light, first Mighty Light, is that the first you'd like to discuss?
Right.
This is a delinquent personal property account, and they have indicated a desire to make some payments. However, that's, so they, they have a fairly substantial delinquency. I believe their request is there, requesting to pay in five thousand dollar installments. One option on this one would be to, to continue the item and then have a payment agreement in place, that there's a substantial delinquency. Forty-five thousand dollars.
So, the question, looking through the documents, it, it appeared like there was an agreement in place, in which I see down here some written notes, I'm not sure, but the written notes say five thousand due on the fifth of each month, starting, starting July fifth, and August fifth, September fifth, October fifth, all the way through February, with Mark being the five thousand one hundred and sixteen, for a total of forty-five thousand one hundred and sixteen. And, I, I'm not, I don't know if that was agreed to, or if that was written down there as an understanding, because the, what's in, what's in question, I believe, is, is the added amount that is on top of that as well, besides forty-five thousand one hundred and sixteen, and I, and the other question I have is have they been, did they agree to this, and have they been paying the five thousand dollars every month?
And I don't know the answer to that. We could find that out, so, obviously, to have a formal written agreement, it would require approval by this body, so this might have been their proposal, informal proposal by the property owner, whether they have been making all those payments that they indicated they desired to do, that I don't know, but we could find out.
Okay.
We want to continue that one, we'll get more details.
All right, maybe we should continue it then, find out information. I didn't have any questions on that one, but I'm happy to continue that one to the next meeting.
Okay. We won't do a motion on that until we get to the end, but, the next one is Utah Dental Center.
This is also a personal property account, I think there was a change of ownership, the new owner indicated that there was this delinquency.
Right. And what's, what's in question is not the, the tax, the tax amount of seven hundred and four dollars and eight cents, what seems to be in question is the penalties and interest of eighty dollars and eighty-one cents, with the change, the change in ownership, and I'm, I'm just not sure what the story is. I see what's, what's presented, but I'm not sure what the, because it looks like there was, there was some conversation according to their statement on June twenty-fifth, and, and some others in July, so I'm just not sure what was discussed. But it's eighty dollars.
Yeah, I think...
It appears like they purchased, purchased this after, after the filing or after the mail, presumably?
Yes, I, yeah, that, that was my understanding, is that they purchased it after this, I believe he was already in place, because of failure file.
From, from my perspective, I have a comment on this one, I, I am fine with the recommendation of denial, I think that this is an opportunity, I, I've expressed some sympathy with the compliance issues with smaller businesses on compliance, personal property in the past. As a general rule, this is a tax, it's due in the county, it's a tax that if you're buying a business, you need to be aware of, you need to do your due diligence, this is an ongoing issue that we see with change of ownership, and so, that's the reality, just like property tax, real property tax, this follows the new buyer of the business, so if you're acquiring a business, you need to go and, and do the tax search and understand the liabilities that are associated with this business, so I, I am upholding the recommendation of denial here.
I would agree with Tanner on that one.
Okay. We'll move to the next one then. That's the Chris and Sarah Mile, Miles.
Let's see, this one, there was a request to refund the penalty interest, I note here, it says that the notices were mailed to the address, provided on the warranty deed, which is standard policy to do that. There was, I, I do note that, I think there was an indication in this one that they had contacted someone at the county to make a change of, to change the address where that was sent.
As I reviewed that one, I'm, I'm in a similar position, I'm comfortable recommending all of the actions in the letter as recommended by staff, but with the holding of the, the first item, or continuing the first item to another week.
Okay, so this one, this was an interesting one to me, because, and I don't know where, what exactly happened, or what was, what was said and done, but it appears from the applicant that there was a request for changing of the address, and it never took place, I don't even know if it's taken place now, in the sense of the address, because the, the notice went to a, in, in essence, a vacant building, and no one is there, and as far as they're saying, there was no mailbox there. So, notification is in, in question here, did they get the notification or not, when they came in to say that, you know, we need to have this changed, this address changed? Apparently, from what the applicant said, an individual, an individual in the county told them, well, everyone pays taxes every year, that's just your responsibility. True statement, but yet, I don't even know if the address has been changed currently, so that they can get the, the proper notification. That, that's what's in question.
We could clearly check and see if there's been a change of the mailing address, that could be done. It is?
So we have the current, we have the current address changed now?
Right.
The, what's in question is, is that, did the, did the tax notice go to a vacant building with no, with no box, no, no mailbox?
For me, this letter is not coming up, but I think that the, what I recall from the packet was that the, all of the documents that were provided by the property owner stated this address that it was sent to. So, if there was a notification or an address issue, it was the address that was provided by the property owner, so I think that's why there was the recommendation of denial.
Even with the, even with a, an ask for a change previously?
I don't think that was, the, it sounds like Andrea's gonna come up, but I don't think that was, that's not what I saw in the application, they, they were not even claiming that they asked for a change previously, they asked for the change at that time, once they acknowledged that there was a problem.
Yeah, we, the, the document itself doesn't show any, doesn't, doesn't document that request for a change of address prior to the delinquency, but whether there was one or not, I don't know. The statement says, "In 2017, when I came to update my address plus pay my taxes, as I have done faithfully and obtain, and timely for the past eighteen years, every year that I have owned a home, the address still, did not get updated in the county's records. Hence, the statement invoice went to an old address." I mean, that's, that's the statement.
Bonus is, then when I told the clerk this, she basically said, "Too bad, everyone knows property taxes are due late November."
So I don't know when that, whether that was after all of this occurred?
This is, and she's stating to, to 2017. And the, and the address was changed, what was the date, first of this year?
The treasurer's address, the treasurer's office made a mailing address change on February twentieth, so I'm assuming since they do the changes, that that's the first that they were made aware. I, I don't know, but in the system, that's the first that it's noticed, is on February twentieth, and they've changed it from a, one Springville address to another Springville address. But also, in 2016, based off the recording of the deed, what the address requested to have notices mailed to, taxes were paid timely in 2016, they were paid at that address on the deed, they were paid a little bit late in seventeen, at the address on the deed. Nothing returned by mail either of those years. Eighteen is the first time that the treasures indicate that there was a tax notice marked and deliverable. That was in eighteen. All with the same original address that was on the recorded document, which is what we mailed to. And all of that is on the property history notes from the system, on that page.
Okay. And, and what we're discussing is 2018. That's the one we're discussing.
Yes, it's 2018.
We're not discussing the other ones. Um, this is, this is 2018.
Correct.
In which there was, I mean, obviously, it says that the, that it was undeliverable, or whatever happened there.
And what's the ask on the, what's the remedy side?
For a, to refund the penalty and interest.
Fifty dollars and thirty-one cents. Um, I, I would recommend that we refund that fifty, fifty dollars and thirty-one cents for the, for what seems to be a whole bunch of confusion that hopefully now is solved with the, the address change.
Okay. I would move that we approve regular agenda item number one, with noting that the first item, the mighty light item will be continued for another week and-
Or until, well, is it another week, or is it until?
Two weeks.
Two weeks, weeks. And that the Miles matter be approved for the refund of penalties and interest.
Second?
I got a motion and a step, and a second to approve the property tax actions as stated in the, in the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 That passes three zero. Okay, number, number two is to approve and authorize the signing of a resolution to dispose of significant parcels of real, real property. That's the one we had the, the, the public hearing for. Commissioner?
Um, yeah, I had a question about, what is the effect of passing this resolu? I guess one of my concerns, well, let me just start, what, what is the effect of passing this resolution?
The effect is it allows you to now consider selling that, that property. Currently, you can't until it went to the public hearing, and now you have to take an official action to officially consider disposing of the property. You don't have to dispose of that property. Um, you may recall, maybe a year or so ago, we had another piece of property, just off the Fifth East exit of American Fort, and went through a similar process, where we had a public hearing, adopted this resolution. We then sent it out and received a handful of bids come back from interested parties. We then sold that property. We closed on it more recently and received, I believe we received the funds at this point. So that's, that's kind of the similar process. We could do lots of options here, under your direction. You could list the property with an agent, if you decided to do that. You could just provide notice that that's available, and you will have interested parties come forward and, and make an offer. You can, you can provide notice and do a sealed offers. There's lots of ways we can do that. We've done that in the past too, with property over, to the, that's the west, south of us, excuse us, excuse me. Where we have done some sort of sealed offers. We've done those kind of things too. So there's lots of options here. This is a large parcel. I would expect that we need to get the information out, if you're interested in selling this, or disposing of it, and getting some bids come back in. I know that Richard's already received some indication from folks that there might be some interested parties out there in this parcel. So all you're doing today is saying, yes, we, we authorize a disposal of the property, but ultimately, that disposal still has to come back to you. So if you decide to dispose it, and you, and it would be through a real estate contract typically, or if you decide to dispose part of it and do other things with other parts of it, it still would have to come back to you. So you still have the ultimate control on what happens with that property.
And I think that now that we've had the public hearing, we could pass this resolution at any time. We don't have to pass it on the same day as the public hearing.
You don't. No, you don't. I, we, we really don't want to start advertising and doing those kind of things until we have this passed, though.
Sure. And, and I guess from my perspective, we didn't have anyone show up at the public hearing. I don't know if the public really felt informed about this. So I would be comfortable extending, essentially extending the notice period to let people come and speak about this, or until our next meeting, and continue this item.
There is no rush on it, as far as I can, I know?
So I guess the question would be, is if that's the standard that we're gonna, we're gonna do, then there's gonna be a lot of things that will continue, you know, for some time if we don't have whatever significant people come out. It, it, it's been noticed a couple times. It's been something that, you know, I know Richard's, Richard's thrown around there. I'm just wondering if we, why wait? Why, why are we waiting? If we're waiting for fifty people to show up, or ten, ten or twenty, what's the, what's the purpose?
No, I, I would never create a standard that you have to do this, but I'm comfortable. I think this is a significant enough part of the community, which, you know, today we're having a budget discussion, and I think that one of the, one of the potential outcomes of this is it can, it can help solve some of our budget problems. But I think that I'm comfortable letting, giving people a chance to, to have this dialogue about this property. And we don't have to do it. I, I don't think so at all. But in this instance, I'm, I'm happy to postpone this, this resolution. Now, I also agree that if we pass it, we still have the right to not sell it. And so we could begin moving forward. So I'm, I'm a little bit open in how we handle it. I don't know what Commissioner Ivey's thoughts are.
Um, I'm happy to pass the resolution today, primarily because it just simply continues to broaden our options with the property. We can see what kind of interest is out there. You know, if there are a lot of people making offers, what those are gonna look like, and, and then we can, you know, just make an informed decision on whether or not to accept those, or to pursue a different path.
And one of-
And often, it, it seems like we get the most feedback even from the public, once it's kind of out there that we're actually selling it.
One other thought, just so you know, on the resolution, it does say that it will not be sold for less than fair market value. So that's a protection for the public.
Okay, any other thoughts? Okay, a, a motion would be in order?
Move that we approve regular agenda item number two.
Second?
Got a motion and a second to approve agenda item number two. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
That passes three zero. Okay, number, number four is to adopt or deny an ordinance to amend Chapter two and Chapter five of the Utah County Land Use Ordinance related to the designating cannabis production establishments as permitted under the, in certain zones. And as permitted by state.
Bryce Armstrong, Community Development Staff. Do you recall in last year's legislative session, the Utah Medical Cannabis Act was passed? Part of that act required, well, let me back up, and then it was subsequently modified in a recent special session last month by the state legislature. So part of that act requires local cities and counties to, if they have agricultural or industrial zones, to designate one of, a minimum of one of each as a zone that, which permits what's termed a cannabis production establishment as a permitted use in, in one of those zones. The most recent revision also clarified that if a county has not designated one of those zones as a zone which this use is permitted, then any of such zones should be construed to allow cannabis production establishments as a permitted use. So we're here to, number one, comply with, with the state mandate to designate cannabis production establishments in, in at least one agricultural industrial zone in unincorporated Utah County, and also to prevent those being able to come in in any of those zones. The staff kind of looked at it and started out conservatively and recommended, well, let me back up. We have, we have one industrial zone, so it's our industrial one, our I-1 zone. And so that's pretty much the zone that we have to designate. Cannabis production establishment as permitted use. By general plan definition or designation, we have four agricultural zones. Our RA-5 zone, our mining and grazing zone, our grazing zone, and our agricultural forty, A-40 zone. Staff recommended that we start with the mining and grazing zone. Submitted that to the planning commission. The planning commission has recommended that for approval to you. We've also created a definition for a cannabis production establishment, which mirrors the state definitions and the requirements. The state has a pretty robust requirement, has a system that requires anyone who wants to operate one of these such facilities to be licensed and go through their, their approval process. And so we would require that such establishment has shown that they have met those state requirements and are licensed by the state. As I understand-
And the state's given out eight licenses, correct?
Yes, and I, as I understand, the original approval of those, none of which were located in Utah County. That may change, I guess, but from what I heard, understand initially, none of them were, were located in Utah County.
Give us a, an understanding, or at least articulate what this cannabis production looks like. Just assume that there's a certain amount of property that's sitting right there. What does that look like under, under this, under the state's law?
So the state, let me get a look at their, or grab their definition. That they define a cannabis production facility or establishment as one of, one of several definitions. So it says, "A cannabis production establishment means a cannabis cultivation facility, a cannabis processing facility, or an independent cannabis testing laboratory." And they go on to further define those. I would assume that if, in unincorporated Utah County, we'd probably, most likely see the cannabis production facility, the grow process. State has limitations on how, where those can be located, the size. If it's an outdoor, I think it's limited to four acres. If it's an indoor grow facility, I think it's a hundred thousand, a hundred thousand square feet. And so those are all regulated by the state. So in reality, the, the other two, I would imagine, require certain services because they're, they're production facilities, and as you're aware, we don't have the fire, water suppression, the fire suppression and water systems in the county. So I think those would be, would be hard to be located in unincorporated Utah County.
My understanding that these, these would primarily be located in greenhouses? Full security, twenty-four hours a day?
Yeah, yeah, I would imagine. I, there are, it, they have some pretty strict operation procedures that require it to be only one public entrance, and to have it secured, and have notification if that, that entrance is breached without anyone there. And so I imagine if you have an open field, that might be harder to, to meet those security measures. And so, but, I mean, not being an expert in the field, I, I can't answer definitely, but I would imagine, I, I know there has been some interest in, in unincorporated areas of the county for some, some greenhouse locations, existing greenhouse locations, so.
So the other question I have, in the sense of a little bit of parody. We have, we have greenhouses, you know, throughout Utah County, even probably in the, in the corporate areas. And they're growing, they're growing plants, right?
Correct.
And why have we not said they can only be in the mining and grazing zone? What's, what's the difference?
Um, I'd have to look to see what zones we all, we allow greenhouses. They are in, for sure, in the RA-5 zone. And that they may be also allowed, most of our agricultural zone uses that are allowed in the RA-5 zone are also allowed in the mining grazing and the other grazing designations. And so I, I know the planning commission recommend, or recognized maybe some, uh, some concerns, specifically of one of these facilities being in the RA-5 zone, where we have most of our residential units or, or population in unincorporated Utah County. So I guess to, to start and meet the requirement to-
What specifically, I mean, I'm trying to figure out what the concern is. What's the concern with, um, with it being like a, you know, a nursery or whatever in an RA-5 zone? Just that it's, it's close to homes?
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's already a built-in requirement that they have to be located a thousand feet, I believe, from what's designated as a community, or defined as a community center, schools and such, churches, and then also six hundred feet from a residential.
I know for me, on this particular one, given the state-type regulations on this, I actually have no problem with it being in the RA-5 zones and even the grazing zone. You know, when we look at the greenhouses, like you'd mentioned earlier, that's, it's regulated by the state. I think that it makes sense to have these type of product, especially the production and the growing capacity in areas of the county where we, where we produce plants. And, and so for me, I would like to see the addition of the RA-5 zone in this ordinance.
Well, and that's, that's kind of where I was, I was leaning, Commissioner, as I was looking at it, because it, it wasn't making sense, you know, just putting in mining and grazing when we have similar productions going on in RA-5 zones already. You know, we're talking about plant growing. These facilities are, are for the most part going to be in greenhouses, twenty-four hour security. You're not going to have signs out front, flashing signs or anything like that. You'll walk by them and not even know what's going on. And so I, that's, I, 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 I'm leaning the same way after looking, looking through it. I don't understand why. Anyway, that's the reason why I was asking those questions on, you know, why mining and grazing. That one seems to be out and away, away from, you know, infrastructure and everything else. And so that was, those are my, those are my concerns too. Why, why not the RA-5?
That was just a start. I mean, we, we notified it to include all of Chapter five, which would contemplate other zones that the commission felt appropriate. So it was just a starting point.
Okay.
For me, this was, I was not even, until this weekend, until this came on the agenda, even though it sounds like staff and our attorney's office have worked on this for quite some time, I did not have any awareness of any of that work, or any of this plan. And so I'm going to ask for a continuance on this item. I, I do have some concerns about the legal issues of this. I saw some language in the proposal that, that said, you know, even if this violates federal law, we're not going to prohibit activity. And, and I'm a little bit confused by that. For me, I'm, I'm not in the habit of, of trying to violate federal law. And so I, I just need more time to work through this with our community development staff and in our civil attorney's office, to make sure I understand the effects of this.
So, so Commissioner, we, and we typically give that, you know, that continuance, and I think that we'd probably hold to it. Just a couple words of, I think, caution, as I've talked with the state and others, the Secretary of Agriculture, or Agricultural Secretary for the state of Utah. And that is, is that if we do not do something, it's permitted in every single zone. And so I, I, I think that the timeframe, the timeframe for us is, is close, if not, we're, we're behind. And so by doing, by doing nothing with applications coming up there, I, 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 I fear that then, that the default on this thing is, is permitted in all zones. Am I wrong on that, or what?
Well, kind, you're, you're halfway there. It's permitted in all agricultural zones.
Agricultural zones, yes.
Oh, it would not be permitted in non-agricultural zones and non-industrial zones, which I would assume would be your C1, C2, they're not considered agricultural zones. So they would not be permitted. If you don't, if you, if you deny this outright, it's going to be permitted in all agricultural zones in Utah County, unincorporated Utah County.
Well, we have permits pending, I mean, I don't know if they're pending, but I know there's been applications currently, at least one. Maybe two coming.
Sure, and that's, that's fine. But, but my, my point is, you can do that. You could, you could deny this ordinance and just say, let's just have it in all the agricultural zones, industrial zones in the, in the unincorporated Utah County. And that would be fine. That's what you decide to do. That, that's your call. The other thing I, I should mention is, this is currently not a pending ordinance. And the reason why I tell you that is because in January eleventh, two thousand nineteen, we noticed this up, to try to get ahead of the, of the curve. Two, two significant things happened after that. Number one- Number one, there was a challenge brought before the Utah Supreme Court to this law. Ultimately, in later in the summer, it was unsuccessful. And secondly, the legislature met in special session to amend the law, which they did. In fact, the day of our planning commission meeting was the final version of that law came out. So that, it was that hot off the presses. We were reading it at four o'clock, right before our planning commission meeting at five-thirty that day. And so that, that was why it was changed. Now, when I say it's not a pending ordinance, the reason I say that to you is because there's a state law in the County Land Use Management Act that says, pending ordinance is basically good for a hundred and eighty days. And we're beyond that. So just make sure you understand that right now, there's nothing pending. Anybody can come in today or tomorrow and start processing in unincorporated Utah County, assuming they have a state license. That's, that's kinda the key here. You can't do this unless you have a state license. And so there's only a few that are out there that, that have that state license. And that's by state.
I'm not sure about that.
That's by state law. Requires, I can read it to you if you'd like.
Come on up, have a, let's, let's have some dialogue.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Drew Rigby. I am the Director of Medical Cannabis and Industrial Hemp for the Department of Agriculture and Food. So I do have, I'm able to share some color commentary on some of these issues. The Department of Agriculture has designated eight parties to receive licenses once they have received their local land use permit and or business license. So we, we have decided to stay licenses until these local issues have been resolved because we do not want to issue and finalize a license until we know that the local control issues have been worked out. And we have the authority to actually do that. It's a plenary power. So we, we have issued, we have finalized, I'll say, three licenses of the eight. We have another three or four that should be finalized this week or soon thereafter. So we, we would prefer to do this reasonably and work with the locals and make sure that this is vetted and, and accepted by all and that there's, there's conversations that, that are, that surround this, these controversial topics and make sure everything settles fairly, and then issue those final licenses. These, these intended licensees are not going to lose their licenses by not being able to obtain a license in Utah County. They, they have the option of operating in Logan to St. George. We, we, the Department of Agriculture and Food, don't necessarily care where they operate. We wanna make sure that the highest qualified individuals receive these licenses. So we don't have a requirement on where they do business. Hence, in the request for proposal that we issued, and we received eighty-two different applications, we asked for proposed locations because we knew and we anticipated that these things would happen. And we did not want to put someone in a corner and say, you're proposing with this type of a location. And if that doesn't work out, we're gonna yank the license. That, that's not the intention. And so as one of the three people who wrote this, this last special session bill, I feel very qualified to be able to stand here and speak on what the intentions of the law and the negotiations were. And I would counsel and I would advise you, as a commission, to be very reasonable in how you approach the, the zoning designations for these type of operations. These are not operations that will be noticeable by the public. I think I would like to understand what your policy desire is. Because if your policy desire is to ban these operations outright and have confrontation with private industry for the next couple of years, if someone decides to come in here and operate, go ahead and do this mining and grazing type of a zone. I, I don't think that that's reasonable. I think it is very much reasonable to allow these operations to exist in, in areas where greenhouses already exist. Again, these will be some of the most secure, if not the most secure, facilities in unincorporated county that are operating. The security requirements are arduous and the compliance that, that must be kept is, is just as arduous. And if they have by, three types of any kind of, any kind of a violation within a year, we have the authority to yank the license. So we feel very comfortable from the state level that the eight that received licenses, you know, intended licenses are highly qualified. Four of them are from out of state who have experience. The other four are from within the state who have immense agriculture experience and experience in other controlled industries with, within the marketplace. And so I, I would definitely ask you to be reasonable whether you, whether you approve a motion today or kick it to next week or the following week, whatever it may be. But there's absolutely a risk that if you don't make a decision and make a reasonable decision, that there is an opportunity for other, other companies to come in and file a license and preserve their right to operate in any type of a designated zone within the next two weeks. And just as an update, we have one licensee that potentially would like to temporarily operate here. The other one who was interested in unincorporated Utah County has, has been leaning towards another location outside of the, outside of the county. So again, as far as distribution of licenses throughout the state, Utah County is likely not to see a long-term cultivation or processing site. They absolutely will see a pharmacy site. But there are other counties, such as Box Elder County, who have upwards of three or four people operating in their county. I, I don't think it's unreasonable to assume that Utah County has space for, for one. And even if you do make a designation with this RA-5, which is, I, I think I understand that the current location where greenhouse operations can exist, I don't know that there's a very large risk as to someone actually coming in and operating there. But you never know. So I'm happy to answer any other questions, but I just wanted to make sure that I understand the, the actual desire of the policy before I make any further comments.
So Drew, a question for you. We have kind of an unwritten standing rule that if a commissioner asks for a continuance of an item, that we do that till the next commission meeting. Does that put us in any, any, any sort of jeopardy at all in the way of losing the ability to then make a designation?
Yes, I would say so. And I, I don't say that as a scare tactic or a fear tactic. The reason why we've had the eight licensees jumping around from place to place throughout the state is because of these types of issues. They have a shot clock, March first. And they know that if, if they start down a road in a county or a city or municipality or whatever it is, and they, they encounter resistance, it's, it's a probability game. Do we, do we stay here? What are our, what are our probabilities of actually obtaining the location that we want versus what the probabilities might be throughout other opportunities in the state? And so, yeah, without a doubt, yes. I, it, it potentially could change one or two people's intentions. There are good pieces of property here in unincorporated Utah County that would be ideal for these types of operations. And again, let me address, I'm deviating slightly from, from your question, but greenhouse operations can exist. A long-term operation is likely to be one hundred percent indoors. There is an option for a cultivator to have a coupled grow, or in other words, they could do an indoor grow plus an outdoor grow, but they can't exceed a certain level. The majority of the grow will most likely be indoors and they might possibly have like a, a small outdoor crop that would be outside. But again, I would, I would testify that, that the likelihood of a long-term greenhouse grow is unlikely. Long-term grows typically require more capital, higher quality product. And so there's an incentive to do what we would call an indoor grow. And an indoor grow is by far the highest securitized facility that there is. And again, they're not allowed to advertise. People come and go quietly, there's one exit. It's, it's a very low-key operation. And I wouldn't feel comfortable sitting here, standing, saying these words if I actually, actually didn't believe that and have personal experience in this industry. So I don't think that it's something that merits complicated conversation further than maybe, you know, what's, what's reasonable, so, if that makes sense. But yes, there is a possibility that, that you'll get more applications, which would preserve the right for people to operate in any zone, so.
All right. Commissioner, you still wanna continue?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, just a general comment. I would say, and then I'll actually ask some substantive questions here. As a matter of process, I, I certainly don't care if the other two commissioners want to do something. I, there's unwritten rules, but, but, you know, I don't take that personally. But as a matter of process, to staff, to members of the public, to other agencies, to anyone who wants to get things done, if, if it's timely, then you should talk with all three commissioners. And you should have, and there should be work done. Because in, in cases like this, I know there's months and months. But, but placing something on an agenda system on a Friday night and expecting someone to vote on Tuesday is not a health, a healthy legislative process. So as, at a principle, I'm, the only thing that I could vote on is no. Now, without even getting into the substance. But since we have you here, I will ask some questions. One of the most concerning things that I've been able to gather, it sounds like you started to address, is in our unincorporated area, if this is permitted within a zone, in some cases, our agricultural operations do not require any sort of permit or license.
Yeah, and that would be unique to Utah County, I understand, correct?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure what the other counties are doing. And so I, I am not, I'm strongly opposed to this. If there's any possibility of someone able to cultivate cannabis without having to come to the county and seek a permit or license.
Yeah, that's a great question and a valid concern. I would think that there's probably ways to address that. I, I don't, I wouldn't advocate that it's reasonable to assume that people should just be able to come in and operate without a business license. I, I'm not aware of anything in the law that would, wouldn't allow you to require a business license. I, I'm not sure. We obviously have to talk about that and let the attorneys do what they do. But yeah, I just, again, that, that's, I think that's probably pretty unique to Utah County. I'm not sure on that. But again, that's up to you guys. I, I guess that's why you're elected officials and, and are able to have that authority to make those decisions, so.
So that's one area that I would wanna clarify. I don't know if anyone wants to speak to that now, but that, that would be something that I would look at as we continue this, is you've talked about indoor facilities, secure facilities, which, in which case, I think they would all require a permit. And we, we might be covered. But if, you also were talking about some outdoor growth. And so I'm, I'm worried that there are situations where someone could, could do this without having a permit or a license.
And I wanna make, make it clear that none of the licensees that, that we've extended licenses to have the intention to come in and push people around and do things quote-unquote "their way." They're looking to be compliant. They're, they are looking to work with the local authorities. I don't think there's a single licensee that prefers to be able to just come in and operate carte blanche. That's not, with that being said, I, I, I think they, they expect reasonableness and hope for reasonableness. And so whether you, as a commissioner, are able to institute some kind of a cannabis business, I, I have, I don't know. At the same time, the law is written that additional ordinances in and above what already exists are not allowed. So that might be something that would complicate that.
And with all due respect, that comment that you made was, was really about the character or the intentions of a known group of actors that you have. Which, in my view, from a legislative perspective, we should put a regulatory scheme together that makes sense for anyone in any circumstance, right? And so I, I'm not sure I can really think about this in terms of, okay, you, you've told us that the licensees you know wouldn't wanna do a certain thing, right? We need to be able to regulate and control any conduct that, that we think is appropriate.
Well, I guess that's why the Department of Agriculture and the Department of Health oversee the cannabis programs at the state level. And obviously, there is some local control that's delegated to, to municipality, cities, and towns. I, I think the concern here is, look, if we're being honest, let's be frank, I'm sure there's some fear of a, of a recreational program down the road that this might bring upon the movement of a recreational program. And what I would, what I would suggest to the panel, if that is a concern, is the best defense against a recreational program is a rock-solid medical program. If this program is not done correctly and done right with efficiencies that gets medication to patients easily, then there's going to be a demand for recreational program that will be coming down the pipeline. And I don't mention that as a scare tactic. I mention that as just a, this is, this is full transparency, open. I'm, I'm trying to help the commission understand the pros and cons of, of, of making certain decisions. And I think it's absolutely reasonable to assume that these production establishments can operate within the scope that the state has defined as acceptable. Hence, they should be able to operate within other zones that greenhouses operate in. And if, if, if an indoor facility is defined, does not meet a greenhouse definition, then so be it, right? They wouldn't be able to do that in that type of location. But I wanna make sure that we're treating these types of facilities fairly, just like we would treat, treat any other private industry business. This is a, this is a medical program. It's not a, a recreational, which, if it was a recreational program, I could, can, and could completely understand how we would treat it differently, but, yeah, so.
And, and from the federal law issues, I don't know if you have any guidance for elected officials or employees. I understand that the federal government has essentially not been acting on this, but still technically, it's, it's crime to, you know, play a part in the production of cannabis under federal law. And so, and so what is the counsel that you're giving elected officials or employees who find themselves in a position of saying, technically, I may be breaching federal law here?
Yeah, so we've, look, I think the best response to that is that this is, this is a program that has been blessed and overseen and directed by the governor himself and his staff. And so there are certain state protections. There are certain federal regulations that are being broke. We're, I think, the thirty-third or thirty-fourth state that has a medical program. We have, part of the original bill, HB three thousand one, required us to go visit with the DEA and Department of Justice and ask for an exception. And so we had that meeting, and of course, we were denied. But it's status quo. As always, the, the administration at this point has not expressed any intention to pursue programs. If they were to pursue programs, I'm sure they would start with recreational programs and work their way back. But I think it's much more likely that, that cannabis in general is legalized before it's actually pursued. And that's just, that's not me having an axe to grind. I really don't care one way or the other. I'm just being completely frank and honest, having had some exposure to the narrative that's, that's been going around. I, I think it's much more likely that that happens. Whether that actually happens or not, I have no idea. That would be speculation. But, but all I can say is that this is a state-sanctioned program. And yes, it's breaking federal law, but I, I don't think there's a person in the program or in the state that doesn't understand that, so.
I know. I mean, I would certainly not, not read that, that intent onto the governor or his staff.
Correct.
And, and, but it's a challenge. It's a statement about our federal government, which is, you know, this is a reality and we have it in a lot of different issues. And so I, and it's not, and not only, not changing the law, but not providing an exception. It creates this, this legal cloud. And the Supreme Court has upheld, in a case about crop production and a case about marijuana specifically, that they, Congress does have the right to regulate this. So that's, it's helpful. And this is why I wanted more time to kind of.
Yeah, and that's fine. And, and I don't dare believe that, or have the audacity to believe that I can stand here as a legal representative on behalf of the state. I can't, nor would I try to. But having been a part of the group that has, has architect, architected and built this, this program, I, I can for sure say personally that every single concern was thought of multiple times and every single possibility was addressed. We intended to do this to create an efficient medical program. We intended to build this program to not become a recreational program. And that's why we built what we have. I think there are a number of pieces of the Utah's program itself that is very unique within the nation, that no other state is doing. And it's given us the opportunity to lead the way and show other states that this can be done in a responsible fashion. And, and I think that we will be looked at as a state who did something slightly different, did it better, more efficiently, and other people will follow suit. But again, we, we're deviating somewhat from the actual topic at hand. And, and again, the intent here is just to advise and counsel the commission, if I may, to, to be reasonable, reasonable about the decisions you make because I do think this is an opportunity to, to be an example for other counties and to show that this can be done in a reasonable manner and it doesn't change the outcome of our lives dramatically. It, it doesn't change our communities. If anything, it, it provides benefits to those who are suffering, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, here's how I see it. The, the federal government has completely failed us on this. They wouldn't even allow. They wouldn't even allow us to study it. And because of that, now we've got all kinds of chaos, I'll just call it chaos, throughout the United States on this issue. And as a county and cities, you know, with the state law, we are, we're in a position where if we don't do anything, it's all permitted. Agricultural, back to that again. It's permitted, it's permitted use. And so if we, if we do something, hopefully, we do it in such a way that it's reasonable or else, or else, you know, you potentially face lawsuits and everything else that could come down the path. And so that's the position that we're in. We've, I think it's better for us to act and act responsibly in this regard and going in a direction that makes sense with parity according to what's already going on and find something that's reasonable for us to move forward. Because the federal government has failed us, and it continues to fail us on that. And if that becomes our standard for it, then we wind up with doing nothing, which then gives us the opportunity for everything in those zones.
And again, there's precedence for these medical programs. There's thirty-three, thirty-plus other states. And let's be honest, Utah has a history, a precedence of our own in breaking federal law, going back years and years and years. So this is not unique to our culture. I think we are the people, a people, a type of people who, when we're failed by others, we take matters into our own hands. And I think that's what this is, so.
Okay. Commissioner, you still want to continue? Two of you can do what you'd like. I'm not prepared to vote on this.
May I address some of the questions that were raised by Commissioner Ainge? Utah County, about a year or so ago, we took out of our business license requirements the growing of crops essentially, and made that an exception to our business license. So when this, in this situation, because of a cannabis production facility would be considered a crop, we would not issue a business license for that facility. In some ways, that actually puts us ahead of the game, because if it's true that all the other counties are issuing business licenses for such a crops, we are not condoning essentially the establishment of these crops and could arguably be in violation of federal law. And so in some ways, we might be ahead of the game with this by not issuing a business license. The other thing I'll mention to you, we also don't issue a permit if it's an outdoor grow facility. Because we would not be issuing permits for any greenhouses or et cetera. If it's an indoor grow facility, it may require a structure, a greenhouse. And in that situation, we would issue a permit. It might only be an agricultural permit for that. And one other thing I'll mention to you is that state law, in my view, has already established what is the reasonable here. And that is that you have to have at least one ag zone and at least one industrial zone. That's what state law requires. Now, you have the option. You can allow it in all your ag zones if you want to. You can, and you can do nothing here today, or you can allow it only certain ag zones. That's your call, and that's what you're here to decide. If you take no action, it will be allowed in all ag zones in Utah County, and we have a number of them, as you know. And so it really, it's up to you what pathway you want to go.
One follow-up question on the license and permit issue. Because even in the gentleman from the Department of Agriculture's comment, part of it was the reason why this should be acceptable, and it's not a threat to the community, and it's a good process, is the fact that these are going to be secure facilities, they're going to be regulated facilities. So if you separate that, if you basically gut that and say, actually, no, there's no additional permitting done at the county level, if that's what your interpretation is of our current code, then that raises a concern for me. Am I following you appropriately here?
We do not issue business license for these facilities because they are exempt under our current county code.
So a traditional greenhouse.
The state would regulate these facilities.
So does this only apply to someone who already has a license from the state?
Let me address this. So I think this might be a little bit of a mute point because if a licensee, an intended licensee was to come and ask for a business license in a area that had not been zoned through this process, you would have to issue them a license. You don't have a choice, right? It's a, it is a permitted use in any agricultural, industrial, or non-zoned area until these zones are chosen at a minimum one of each. And so if they were to come and ask for a business license before the process or after the process, if they were compliant with ordinances, you would have to issue them a business license if they were a licensee of the state.
I'm not, I'm not positive that our attorney's office in the county would agree with that statement, but I appreciate you sharing it.
I don't know how we would disagree on that. I mean, that's very clear.
The only disagreement is whether we would require any business license at all.
Right, on your end, on your end. But whether you did or didn't, like I'm saying, it's a little bit of a mute point because you would have to issue it regardless.
Well, not if we don't require one, we wouldn't issue one.
Again, it's a mute point. If it doesn't exist, it's implied either way. They have the right to the business license.
And there's also still the federal law question.
Sure, I'm just, these are semantics at this point.
Really quickly, let me add on the permit side of things. Let me read from the state's most recent Senate Bill 10002. A person who receives a cannabis production establishment license under this chapter, if the municipality or county or the licensed cannabis production establishment will be located, requires a local land use permit. So the state is contemplating that some counties may not require a permit. Shall submit to the department a copy of the licensee's approved application for the land use permit within one hundred and twenty days after the day on which the department issues the license. So the language did contemplate that the state license may come first, and that's why we were kind of taking that stance. We do have the ability to issue what's called a zone compliance permit if someone requests such a permit. It will help, you know, it will help them verify that they meet our requirements. You know, if anyone wants to show something to the state, you know, we have a catch-all land use permit called a zone compliance permit. We could issue it requesting.
Given some of the legal questions, I would actually ask David Levitt to maybe share his comments on this.
Thank you, Commissioner Ainge. There's a few things I think that everyone can agree on. Number one, that there are multiple layers of government. Utah County is not a sovereign entity. It's a political subdivision of the state of Utah. The state of Utah is a sovereign and does have the capacity to pass its own laws. However, there is also another sovereign, and that is the federal government. And while the state of, while the state of Utah has the ability to legalize anything it wants to legalize. And let's be clear, I am not giving, I'm not wading into this debate myself as to how I feel about the issue of medical marijuana or recreational marijuana or anything else. I'm simply giving you my perspective as to how the relationship and the interrelationship of Utah law with federal law works. But just because the state of Utah has the ability to legalize anything it wants to legalize doesn't mean that, that doesn't make us somehow liable or responsible under federal law. And I will say quite bluntly that anyone who participates or agrees or works together in one body or another to violate federal law becomes a co-conspirator in violation, to violate federal law. That's not to say that it's not legal in the state of Utah, but it is to say that, you know, those who participate in moving an agenda forward that is in violation of federal law become, at one point or another, co-conspirators with the whole movement and become, open themselves up for the possibility of federal prosecution. Now, I'm not in a position to say what the US Attorney would do. I am in the position to say what he and many other US Attorneys have not done in the past. But that's not something that I would say that you can rely on, particularly in today's political climate, when it becomes clear that there are people who will utilize federal law to, let me say it a different way. Simply because something hasn't been enforced in the past doesn't mean that it doesn't become a political issue in the future for someone willing to enforce. And you have two choices here. You can designate a zone whereby medical marijuana may be grown, or you can do nothing, thereby allowing it to be grown under state law countywide. But whether you designate a zone for it to be grown in a small corner of Utah County, in that small corner of Utah County, if we designate such a zone, we are participating in the violation of federal law.
So I got to ask you a question on that then. So then are you recommending that we do nothing?
I'm recommending you do nothing.
And if we do nothing, then it's permitted in all agricultural zones?
Just like, just like every other drug distribution enterprise that is in violation of federal law, yes.
Because I'm just, I'm just looking at four dash forty-one A dash four oh six parentheses three. And as you read down through that, I think that the county has no discretion in denying a permit, you know, based on concerns about the federal government on this issue. We can't deny it if the state's, if that's the law of the state. And so your recommendation of doing nothing then would allow it in all?
If you were prosecuted federally, your defense for that would be the state made me do it. That's the defense of compulsion. But just because the state of Utah says you have to do this irrespective of what the federal government may do to you is not going to eliminate the possibility that the federal government could begin to enforce this. I mean, one sovereign does not have the ability to tie the hands of the other sovereign. And, so.
We've got two masters out there.
Yes, you do.
Except for where there is conflict, federal law preempts.
That's true. That's a well-established principle. And I'm a big states' rights guy. But as a Utah County attorney, I would not feel comfortable advising my county commission to knowingly violate federal law. It's your choice. However, you can designate something and become complicit in the violation of federal law. Or you can do nothing and let whoever's going to grow whatever they're going to grow do that.
Okay. Thank you for your opinion.
Thanks for, David, thank you for that, and I appreciate that feedback.
So, you know, with that and kind of the thought process, I would be in favor of putting this off, at least. At least, you know, having more thought and consideration in this.
I move that we continue regular agenda item number, well, actually, let me pause. Commissioner Ivey, did you have any other comments?
Not, if we're going to continue, I'm good at this time. I mean, this is, I'm a proponent and support of allowing this type of production to occur in the county. And so for me, it's just what's the best way to do that? You know, coming into the days, I kind of felt like it was, you know, designating those areas where greenhouses can exist to be able to have these facilities. But our good county attorney's comments made me contemplate that it might be best to just do nothing because that, in essence, allows that to happen and might protect us better legally in the case that the federal government decided to do something. So it's an interesting decision point for me. But happy to continue it.
Okay. So I would move that we continue regular agenda item number four for two weeks.
Second?
Got a motion and a second to continue agenda item number four for two weeks. All in favor, say aye.
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 That passes three zero. Okay, number five is to adopt a resolution noticing and stating the following. Utah County intends to levy a tax rate that exceeds the county's certified tax rate. And I know we have a presentation.
Getting a presentation up on the screen here. I think we timed out.
It was working earlier, so.
Yeah. Josh Daniels from the Clerk Auditor's Office. So for this agenda item, we're going to walk through a couple of different slides and some information. I'll start with a little bit of a general overview of property tax, the property tax system, the rates in Utah County, particularly over time and with respect to economic trends in the county. Danine, our county budget officer and county finance officer, will walk through some of the specifics of the budget as it's looking for next year. And I think she'll also create an opportunity during her presentation for departments, if that's something you still wanted to do, where departments maybe can come up and talk a little bit briefly about the trajectory of growth that they're experiencing in their department and maybe some details behind the request for 2020. So I know that many understand this, but for really the benefit of everybody, the public included, just a little bit of high-level background of how the county's general fund is generally funded. Two primary revenue sources are property tax and sales tax. There's also a number of other revenues. There's fees and fines and things like that that are added into this mix. But really, the driving force of revenue for the general fund activities of the government of Utah County are property tax and sales tax. And this chart here shows the share of property and sales tax over time, going back a little over ten years. You'll notice that there are some increases in the mid-two thousands that was primarily driven, so there's a total right at the stacked chart. The blue is property tax, the red is sales tax. There were actually property tax increases in Utah County in the mid-two thousands in the form of a shifting of money from the ANC rate into the general rate that created essentially a net increase in tax rates for Utah County. Even though it didn't go through the traditional truth and taxation process because it was a little bit complicated. There was some sort of narrow opportunity for that under state law with rearranging how you fund assessing and collecting and general fund activities. But it resulted in essentially a net property tax increase, which is why you see that bump. But then you'll notice, starting in about 2014, the property tax rate increase is outpaced by the increase in sales tax revenue. What you're seeing there is you're seeing post-recession growth in Utah County. One of the challenges, though, is that your budget becomes increasingly dependent on sales tax revenue versus property tax revenue, which is subject to exogenous economic forces that are imposed on you. So that's potentially a concerning trend. The next slide here, this is, so using a specific example of Provo, any and every city is sort of similar. So a resident who lives in Utah County and pays property taxes, the total amount that they pay in property tax each year goes to a variety of government entities throughout the county that receive that revenue, the largest of which is the school district. We have three school districts in the county, Alpine, Nebo, and Provo. So just using this example of a typical property in Provo, using the average value in the county of three hundred and thirty-four thousand for a home, and under the exemption of forty-five percent, essentially, you're looking at a taxable value of one hundred and eighty-three. and eighty-three thousand. Um, that would create a tax, a property tax liability for that particular homeowner of nineteen hundred dollars. Where does that money go? Well, in the case of Provo, if you lived in Provo, and it's a little different from city to city, but it's all generally within, you know, three or four percent of this. You'd pay seventy percent of those property taxes to the school district, that's the largest share. Um, the next largest share is the city, the municipality. In this case, it's seventeen and a half percent. Um, and then you have the county general fund, which is six point eight percent. Um, then you have, of course, Central Utah Water District. There are other special districts as well that make up a very small share, um, throughout the county. In this ca, in this particular example, this particular homeowner isn't paying into a special district. And then there's the assessing and collecting rate, which is to cover the cost of running the property tax system. That covers, uh, the treasurer, the recorder, the assessor, the tax administration, et cetera, throughout the county. It benefits all of those government entities that receive property tax revenue. So what this shows you is, um, you know, the average person paying property tax, the, the vast majority goes to the school district, and then the municipality, and then you have the county general fund. That's kinda how it's split out.
Uh, Josh, can I, if you just were to go back on this? So I think this is always a helpful slide, so that essentially, one thing, if I'm understanding correctly, everything that you're about to talk about with our general fund, if people think about their property taxes in terms of, in this example here, this nineteen hundred and seventy-nine dollars...
Right.
That's not the amount that if we were to have an increase, we'd be talking about increasing. It's only the portion that is the county, that's the only rate that the county commission sets, so it's this a hundred and thirty-four dollars...
Exactly.
...that could be subject to the increase based on this meeting.
Yeah, that's correct. And that's a really good point and distinction. The county government administers the property tax system, but that's a service to all the other local government-type entities throughout the county, school district being a, a sort of government-type entity. But the only property tax rate that's actually set by the county is the county general fund rate, technically also the assessing and collecting rate. That's to recoup that cost of administering the system. But in the case of the school district, or a municipality, or a special district, they're setting their rate through their own truth and taxation process. And so, um, in terms of the county budget and this conversation, we're really only looking at the purple section of this pie, which is the six point eight percent of the property tax liability for any given payer of that rate. And, and right, right currently at six point eight, that's a hundred and thirty-four dollars in this example for this, you know, sort of average home that would be located in one of the municipalities, Provo. So, uh, this is just a stacked bar chart showing the exact same thing that you saw in the pie chart. Now this slide is looking at, um, what is the effective tax rate on residential property owners throughout the county over time, as far back as we have easy data to obtain, which in this case was nineteen eighty-five. So looking at the mil rate, the millionths, um, one way to talk about it, this is the general levy, and it's the effective rate, meaning it's the total market value, uh, you're using, you know, the total property tax liability over the total market value. That's, I think, how the average taxpayer would think about their own tax liability. They would say, look, my house is worth X and I pay Y, what does that look like? So what you see is fairly consistent decline over time. There's some few specific changes in, in particular years. Um, there's a couple of interesting dynamics at play in this particular chart. One is that I think that the way we assess property for the market value has gotten better. If you look at your property valuation notice today, you're gonna notice that the market value that's on your assessment is close to a true market value. Um, I, it's been said that in the past, that wasn't really the case, this assessment, you know, the way they assessed property or the way they appraised property for property tax purposes just wasn't, wasn't the same way. Um, so that's part of the decline you're seeing. Obviously, um, property tax values have increased, um, but the nominal dollar amount, or at least the, the sort of budgeted amount, has stayed relatively constant over time because of the truth and taxation process. You have to go out of your way to increase property tax revenue, otherwise the rate will float down. Um, so this is different than other states where their property tax system, the rate might stay constant, and if your valuation goes up, the amount you pay goes up. Well, it doesn't work like that in Utah. As your, as your value goes up, your effective rate will go down unless there's some change to the property tax revenue that's consciously decided by a government entity through the truth and taxation process.
One comment on that. I think, I think another clarification that can be helpful in this is, so often we're conditioned, when we speak about taxes, from the, the news of our federal government and state government. So an income tax, for example, we have a, a relatively high tax rate, and, uh, nobody wants, wants that to go up, right? But there's also a certain logic to that, that says, why should the tax rate be going up if we have a healthy economy and our economy's expanding, then the revenue, nobody would say that the government doesn't need any additional revenue, right? But the, the fiscally conservative argument is that the way that revenue comes through is by the low rate applied to an expanding economy, instead of increasing the rate and potentially hurting the economy. But that doesn't happen here. And then it's same thing at the state level, you know, state income tax. Why would we ever be raising that in a booming scenario? As a taxpayer, I would raise my hand and say, why on earth? I, I want to, um, go out and, and hear from any elected official who wants to do that, especially right now. And so sometimes that same mindset would, would be applied to what we're doing here today and would say, well, why are we even talking about this in a booming economy? And that is the key issue, I think, that you raised, is that with property tax, that's not the case. Every year, the property, since two thousand and twelve, or further back, the property rate has decreased. So your home value is assessed at a higher number, but as a result, if you ta, if you take the same pool of property, and it's worth more today, automatically under state law, unless we do something, which we haven't done historically, that rate is reduced so that the same amount of dollars come into the county general fund.
Right.
And so I think that, that's a distinction that is not, doesn't apply to income tax or sales tax discussions.
It's not the same amount of dollars. The dollars increases.
So the dollars would only increase if the homes increase. The, the dollars would increase if the homes increased. If you had, let's say you had a hundred, you know, you had a hundred homes total, that was it. And year one, the total tax revenue was set at, you know, whatever, a million dollars. You'd take the million dollars divided by the hundred homes, whatever the valuation of the hundred homes were in total, that would set your rate. The very next year, if you still had a hundred homes, you would only get a million dollars in revenue. The only way you would get more revenue is if you had a hundred and two homes. And then what you would do is you would take the million dollars that you are essentially guaranteed as local government from the year before, you would take the, the million dollars you're guaranteed, divided by the total valuation currently of the hundred homes in that year, that would create your rate. You would then apply that rate to, um, we got Windows that doesn't like to, uh, Windows is so impatient sometimes. Um, you would have, so then you would, once you set the rate based on the assumption of the hundred homes, you would apply the rate to the hundred and two homes. And that's where the new growth comes in, is that that second year, you now have two homes in this universe, and those two new homes are generating additional revenue that is their share of the revenue that they're bringing to the table, that's at the same rate as the, as the pre-existing hundred homes. So you're right that the dollars, that the total nominal dollars would go up over time if you're growing in terms of total, uh, if, if you have new growth. If you were in a county where there was no new growth, then the total dollar value in property tax revenue would actually stay the same. You'd capture sales tax, so if the economy was booming and there was more transactions happening in terms of sales, then your sales tax revenue could or would go up. Um, but in terms of property tax revenue, your property tax revenue would stay the same. So, and to test this theory, you could take a home, and s, and if you could find a very typical home, and it was existing in the county thirty years ago, and it still existed today, and that home went up and down in market value in line with the rest of the county, um, then theoretically, the amount of dollars that that homeowner would pay over time would be relatively constant. I actually did that. So I picked a home that was built around nineteen oh five, right in historic Provo. Hasn't changed at all. I, I know the homeowners, I used to live nearby, and they haven't changed, the home's been owned by the same family for thirty years. They've made little changes to the home, you know, they didn't like add an extra bedroom, which would increase sort of the economic footprint, if you will, of that home, and thereby changed forever the trajectory of their tax. Um, in nineteen ninety-seven, it was a high year, there were some things going on in ninety-seven, but in nineteen ninety-seven, they paid a hundred and five dollars total in county property tax, and last year they paid ninety-eight in, in actual just dollars, dollar to dollar. And it's, it's gone, it's bumped up and down throughout the, the eighties, seventies and eighties and nineties. Um, and the reason that that happens is because, uh, you would only pay the same if your house always increased and decreased in market value the exact same as the, as every other house. But sometimes what happens is some houses in one part of the county, they will, uh, increase in value at a faster rate than other houses. Their actual property tax burden will grow ra, rather than stay, uh, constant. So that's one feature where people will see differences over time. But if you look at it on a countywide basis, the amount of nominal dollar revenue that you receive from pre-existing homes over time stays the same, and you get more from new growth.
And, and if you were to test that, just in case anyone who is enough of a nerd to watch this and test it out, right, again, just to reiterate, the point is, it might be that your dollar amount has gone up since nineteen ninety-seven, at least in the case of this one homeowner...
Right.
...or stayed relatively con, constant. But their total property tax bill has increased probably significantly.
Yes.
Because their city and their school district has increased, has been through truth and taxation a number of times during that period.
That's correct.
But Utah County has not.
Correct. Yep, that's correct.
But you would, you would agree that like in nineteen eighty-four, our, our, our property tax was roughly around ten million dollars?
Right.
And our property tax in the way of collection of actual dollars is closer to forty million dollars now.
Correct. And that, and that is from new growth.
Right.
So then the question becomes, is the revenue you receive from your property tax over that period of time adequate to deal with the new growth?
Now we're talking about a formula. Is the formula correct? Is it, if it was correct in nineteen eighty-four, is, is it correct today? That's the question.
Um, well, there's not really a formula, because it's a, it's a raw dollar amount. The way that the system works is it says, you got ten million in nineteen eighty-four. That means in nineteen eighty-five, you're entitled to ten million. And theoretically, in twenty nineteen, you're only entitled to ten million. The only way in which you're entitled to more than ten million is if you get a whole bunch of more new houses that come into that county. So if nobody moved into the county and no new property was created, um, or developed, there was no new growth, no new development, you would still have ten million dollars today.
Right. I, I mean, a formula based in the sense that if in nineteen eighty-four, the formula that, that, you know, that was assessed to the property value, and also the property tax was paid, was correct to support the, the government and the services that were needed and necessary, and then you add, add another one, if that formula's correct, then yes, it just grows in, into the next years as we're going. And as we go up, then if that formula's correct, it should support itself because it supported the past.
Yeah, theoretically, that would be true. Yep. And one, and, and I think one, another slot, one of the next slides will help to kinda do this. Um, this is a comparison chart of, of rates. Um, so Utah County's general fund rate is the red one at the bottom. Uh, you have the school district, just for reference, you know, a lot of the school district rates are kind of up there. I mean, a big chunk of the school district funding comes from property tax. Um, if you compare our general fund rate in our county to some of the other counties, that's, those are the other lines. I've got a better chart of this, we'll go to the next slide. Okay, I think this gets really to your, your point, Commissioner, that, that you're making here, uh, or asking about here, and that is, what is the economic cost of property taxes to the citizens of Utah County? And what is the economic value produced for the purpose of funding general government operations? This chart, I think, does the best job of showing that. So what this is, is this is all of the property tax revenue generated by Utah County's property tax rate for general fund operations. So that's the general fund rate, the, the mil rate as we, um, were talking about earlier. And so it's, but it's, it's, instead of looking at the rate, we're looking at the total revenue generated. So in your example, about ten million in nineteen eighty-five and forty million today. Um, so the total property tax revenue over time. Now, the property tax revenue over time in nominal dollars, in economic terms, is less helpful than an inflation-adjusted number. So this number is inflation-adjusted. So this is saying the total dollars, adjusting for inflation, so we're comparing all of these years over time to the current year. In this case, it's actually twenty eighteen. So this is in twenty eighteen dollars, looking back over the past, uh, in this case, we're looking at about twenty years of data here. Um, and then, uh, it, and then doing that per capita. So saying on a per capita basis in the county, what's the economic cost total in property tax that you as a citizen are paying adjusted for inflation? And so the trend is similar to the rate chart. So what you're seeing, and if I could look more closely at those numbers, um, trying to think what that nominal, what that dollar amount is in, in nineteen ninety-seven timeframe versus today...
It's over seventy.
So just over seventy dollars per capita, inflation adjusted in twenty eighteen, versus today, we're just over forty. So what that's saying is that in terms of twenty eighteen dollars, today, an average citizen in Utah County is paying a little over forty dollars per person towards general fund versus back in nineteen ninety-seven, they were paying something like seventy dollars.
So, so you're saying that, that our, that, um, our property tax has not kept up, kept up with inflation?
That's true. Property tax has not kept up with inflation. Sales tax has been the only saving grace for general fund operations. Yeah.
Seen different charts, but anyway, okay.
And again, this is on a per capita basis.
I, I know, I know.
Yeah, so, right, there's, there's, there's other, there are other economic forces in play, um, but, but that's true, cause if you looked at inflation and you looked at our actual revenue, they, they don't match. The, the trajectory of those lines don't match. And, and I think that's what you see happening with deficit, with recent deficits, is you're, you're starting to feel the, the effects of that over time. Some of these numbers that have changed, so you'll see a pivot point in about two thousand and seven or eight. This inflection point actually reflects the shift, uh, from ANC to the general fund that took place the year before. So you actually see a bump up, um, cause that, as I described, is essentially an economic tax increase, is what that was. You just didn't have to do a truth and taxation, there was kind of an opportunity in state code where you could make that, that transfer, and that was then a permanent change to the rate, and so you can see how it generated, uh, revenue over time, you know, that you can kind of see that's what that, that, what you're looking at there. So, let's go to the next chart. Um, this is Utah County, the same chart you just saw compared to every other county in the Wasatch Front, urban county. So Weber, Salt Lake, and Davis, the most comparable in terms of, uh, economies. Same data, adjusted for inflation, total real property tax revenue for the general fund, adjusted to twenty-eight dollar, twenty eighteen dollars, and looking at it on a per capita basis. So what this is telling you is that the average person in Utah County is essentially paying on a per capita basis, property taxes in today's dollars, um, of whatever that number is on the far right, uh, versus, uh, there, you know, our sort of si, neighbor counties to the, to the north. And that's over time. And again, you can kind of see, some of those inflection points represent tax increases that were levied in those counties, and, um, some of those other sort of trajectories and inflection points can also be other economic factors playing in. So, you know, population shifts, if you have significant changes in population, you would see declines, um, and, and that sort of thing. So this chart is taking the previous chart and thinking about this comparison, county to county, and because other counties, the way, the things that they fund, the services that they fund, um, are, are different than our county. So, for example, in the case of Salt Lake County, they have a pretty robust county library system. And so the light blue sections of this chart are showing, uh, just the sort of general fund type operations and the property tax devoted to them. Um, the total size of the chart is the total general fund property tax rate. It's just that other counties fund certain things within that rate. Um, so this kind of breaks that out and shows where Utah County, uh, has compared in the past, um, to Weber, Davis, and Salt Lake. And this is my last slide, and, and I'll mostly let Danine talk about this... And this is my last slide, and, and I'll mostly let Danine talk about this in, in her presentation. Um, this is just showing, uh, fund balance over time in terms of spending. So where the general fund expenditures budgeted to spend fund balance versus contribute to the fund balance. So in fourteen, you see a contribution to the fund balance. In fifteen, you see spending into fund balance. Uh, sixteen, contributing. Seventeen, eighteen and nineteen projected and, and, um, you know, our projection current to date may not be that steep, but it's still, uh, it was budgeted and, and is still spending into fund balance. So that's the concept of the sort of deficit spending. The question becomes, what, what happened in twenty sixteen or seventeen, w- you know, is this trajectory something that can change? Um, what's going on here, right? What, so basically, rather than contributing to rainy day fund, our expenditures year over year aren't meeting our total revenues year over year for the last three years. And that's what we project will happen again in twenty twenty to date as we're looking at it. So, and I'll turn the time over to Danine and talk a little more detail about, um, expenditures in twenty twenty.
Thank you, Josh.
Are you gonna stay on this chart?
Um, I was gonna move off, but I can stay on it. It's, um, later on in my presentation, so I'll come back to it. What about me to? Okay. Danine Jackson, Utah County Auditor's Office. So I just wanted to present some of the financial information, actual results where the county general fund, um, how it's being spent. And the first chart that I wanted to start off with is what exactly does the general fund cover? Sometimes there's, um, some misconceptions that they'll say, why, why are we talking about a property tax increase? The commission approved, say, four million dollars for the Provo Airport. That's a separate funding source. That's the tourism, recreation, cultural and convention facilities tax, which is separate from the general fund. So I've created four functional areas that the general fund covers. It's essentially general government, which would be the commission, human resources, um, the clerk auditor in the terms of finance, purchasing, um, the surveyor, public works, GIS. The next category is public safety, which is law enforcement, um, which is patrol and investigative services. And I just want to mention that that would be for, um, the county as a total and especially our recreational areas. The citizens of the unincorporated area are in a service area, it's service area six, that they receive a separate levy to pay for law enforcement services specifically for the unincorporated area of the county. So that is not contemplated in the general property tax or sales tax collections. Um, this also includes court security costs, um, that the county is required to provide at the fourth, um, judicial district court. And then contributions to the Utah Valley Dispatch Special Service District. Then we have a category that I'm calling the justice system, which would be the jail, the prosecuting attorneys, the justice court, the public defender, and then contributions to the Children's Justice Center. And then finally, the final category being public welfare, which would be mosquito abatement, USU extension services and operating contributions to our drug and alcohol prevention and treatment department and the health department, and Wasatch Mental Health Special Service District. So as you can see, when we went through that list, things that aren't included would be, um, tourism related items. Um, the county's also been fortunate that they haven't used any general fund, um, monies for roads. That's all been funded by either sales, separate sales taxes, dedicated sales taxes, a motor vehicle registration fee, or, um, money that we receive from the state through the motor fuel tax. Um, it also doesn't cover assessing and collecting activities. Josh talked earlier about that. That is a separate levy. There's both a state and a local levy for the, um, activities of the treasurer, the assessor, the recorder and the BOE. Um, so I wanted to go into a little bit of the definition of a structurally balanced budget. Um, state law requires the commission to adopt a balanced budget, meaning that the revenues equal the expenses. And so when the county utilizes fund balance, that shows in the budget as a revenue source, which is a technically balanced budget. Um, however, according to the Government Finance Officers Association, that's not a structurally balanced budget because you're using a one-time funding source for recurring expenses. So what, and it's called one time because once you use it, it's not available again. And so to have a structurally balanced budget, you want to have recurring revenues match your recurring expenses. One-time funds would be appropriate to use for a one-time expense. And then this is the similar chart, um, to what Josh had shown earlier with the increase and decreases. I updated the chart to show twenty nineteen. It doesn't show, it's a little bit lighter up on the TV, but it's about three million dollars right now. Um, and then the twenty twenty budget, um, as it stands without any additional asks, is about ten point five million dollars out of balance. I'll mention that about a month ago, the county passed a, um, financial reserves policy whereby the general fund is required to retain two months' worth, which is sixteen point seven percent of the general fund operating revenues in unassigned fund balance. Um, as of the end of twenty eighteen, the county was compliant with a policy. I think the, um, requirement was around twelve million dollars and the county has currently fourteen million dollars in a, unassigned fund balance. If the county utilizes about a million dollars in fund balance in twenty nineteen, um, the county would not be compliant with that policy any longer. And that policy requires that the, um, that be addressed within the next three years. So, you know, not knowing where we're gonna completely end in twenty nineteen, that, that, um, plan to replenish the funds could become effective. Do you have any questions about this chart? Cause I knew you mentioned that earlier.
Can we go back to the other one?
Which?
One that Josh was on.
Oh, sorry. Okay.
So, I mean, I know what happened between twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen, um, when there was revenues that was, that was discontinued at over four million dollars and the expenses were not cut, cut, which is about two and a half million, which, which ironically, if you'd two and a half million off that three point one puts us up there differently. And then twenty eighteen puts us in the green. If you take that two point five million dollars in expenses that is, is still being incurred. And then I don't know on this, and now, these are actuals. Twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen are actuals. They're not projected. So it's a little hard on apples to apples to look at a projected on the actuals because it does bounce back and forth. There's, it's often that we see project, projections like this. When, when was this projected, um, calculated?
Um, so this was earlier, um, probably a few months ago. That's why in my chart, it's only about three million dollars because we've had some additional revenue come in that's, that's been adjusted.
So you, you calculated that, that three point three million dollars in there?
Right.
So that, that was adjusted in there?
Right.
So we can see that, you know, it says five point two here, but you take that three point three off, and that's putting us down quite a bit. And then of course, that two point five that I'm talking about that continues to plague us through this. Um, it, it's a whole different scenario. It looks different. The chart looks different.
Right. I might also mention, I mean, you know, definitely that seems like a big ticket item with, was the loss of the revenue. But there were some other events that took place in twenty seventeen that, um, required the deficit spending. One of the big ones was an investment in the county's Human Resource Information System or HRIS. The other big item that occurred in twenty seventeen to the tune of one point five million dollars was the change in the county's other post-employment benefits. Um, specifically the survivor benefit where it was, um, changed to include a COLA and also to, um, still be allowed for remarriage circumstances. So those were also big items that occurred during that year. That would be ongoing items.
Sure.
Um, the next chart that I wanted to show is just the change in staffing plan. Again, these are gonna be ongoing costs or recurring costs. Um, and mainly my point with this chart is to show that there has been growth in the employees, um, that it hasn't been, you know, a constant level. Like we ha- we do have additional ongoing expenses that have been approved in the staffing plan. And then what this chart shows is a, a per capita proportional chart of property and sales taxes.
I'm sorry to interrupt you on that. So,
You want?
If you go back to that chart though.
Okay, sure.
Because not everyone in this chart is, is tied to general fund.
That's true.
So, yeah.
Yeah, that, that's true. So this chart shows, um, per capita on a proportionate basis. If, so if a resident of the county pays either a dollar in property or sales tax, how is that dollar being spent? So you can see, um, starting in twenty fourteen, roughly forty-five percent of that would be on the justice system. Then we have about another twenty to thirty percent that would be on public safety. Um, another ten percent on general government and another ten percent on public welfare. And so you can see how those allocations have changed over time.
One, one comment on this.
Sure.
I think that it's the same point, no matter what we say, that the, the overall, or the, the, the largest item is public safety in our justice system.
Right.
But it's debatable. You could even show that that's even a higher percentage. Because a lot of these green and yellow categories in, well, really the, the yellow in the general government are services that are performed on a pro rata basis to all of the departments. And because our public safety and justice system are such a high percentage, they really represent, whatever this is, seventy-five percent of this gold or yellow item as well.
Right.
So, and it, so, and I know we've talked about doing that in terms of charging those administrative fees to the various departments, but regardless, it's the same point. This is where most of our tax dollars are being spent.
Right. So I wanted to talk about five areas to focus on as a rate is being, um, determined. The first area that I wanted to talk about is risk management. Um, one suggestion that the auditor's office is going to make is creating a trust fund for risk management activities. Um, currently the county relies on the general fund balance for, um, lawsuit settlements, errors and omissions, things that we don't know about. The general fund is kind of our risk management fund. And so a proposal would be to move that to a separate trust front, trust fund with an annual contribution going to that fund. That would be estimated initially at seven hundred thousand dollars. Um, again, that's losses not covered by the insurance. And then also another item that the county is currently experiencing is multiple cases that may involve death penalty, which is of course more costly to the county. And again, currently that general fund would be what covers that. And so those two items together are estimated at one point seven million dollars. Um, one thing that is brought up, um, often to the commission is the risk of jail medical costs. Uh, that is a cost that can't be anticipated. Um, so there is one point four million dollars currently in the twenty twenty baseline budget for jail medical costs. Just so that you understand your risk exposure, the highest that that's been has been about one point seven million dollars. And again, it could even be higher than that. There's just no way of estimating that.
I'll make a comment about this. I mean, from my perspective, we should have an amount set aside for unknown litigation and risk management issues as well as the known cases that we're already dealing with. And in my mind, if anything, this number is a little bit low because it doesn't really factor anything unknown. And it's, in my opinion, a little bit low for even some of the known issues that we are currently dealing with. So I, I appreciate that you're bringing this in, but this is a real, this is a real area. We've had exposure in the past where we have paid out, um, close to a million dollars. Uh, we do take on these types of litigation risks from time to time.
And I'm happy to update these numbers with any better information, certainly. Okay, the next area that I wanted to talk about as an area of focus is our capital needs. Uh, the county does have a capital projects fund, has about nine point five million dollars in it currently. Um, and along with the fund balance reserve policy passed a month ago, there was a separate capital planning policy that was adopted, which does require a, um, committee to be organized to formally present a capital projects plan to the commission with that plan being approved. That would be a ten-year plan and the first three years of that plan are required to be funded. Um, so this information, of course, we don't have an adopted capital projects plan in place yet. So this information is again, going off the best information that I could gather together and it, it could be changed. But the first item is, um, IT software and hardware maintenance and necessary upgrades. That includes getting some of our systems to be web-based instead of, um, power builder-based, um, to make them more accessible and to have a better graphical user interface. So there is going to be some investment in software needed to make those upgrades happen. The next item that's been talked about, um, actually in this meeting is the cost of building or expanding the, um, administration campus here, um, which, uh, was about seventy-five to ninety million dollars. On a debt service perspective, that would be about five million dollars a year. And that could vary depending on, um, what type of bonding was done and how long the, um, debt service was, um, which the initial estimates were twenty to thirty years. Some additional capital projects plans that have at least been expressed, again, not adopted, are a motor pool, um, slash fuel station upgrade in twenty twenty, a public works, a public works facility in twenty twenty-one, a foothill, um, that would be, um, substance abuse treatment facility in the north part of Utah County, and a health services building also in the north part of Utah County. When those items are added up, subtracted by the amount that's currently in the capital projects fund of nine point five million dollars, that's a shortfall of twelve point two million dollars. If I divide that by three years, there were no projects estimated or anticipated for twenty twenty-two. That's approximately four million dollars a year. So the items here are ten million dollars.
Danine,
Yeah, sure.
Couple of comments on this. I mean, the, the building, you know, we had this architectural firm come in, do needs planning analysis, and they said, we need to spend seventy-five to ninety million dollars in new buildings or renovations. To me, that shows the, the other side of, of this equation. You know, we were talking about deficit spending in the previous slides, but it's actually worse than that. Because in addition to spending into the deficits, we haven't planned for our huge capital needs, which don't really show up in the budget anywhere. And now we have this enormous expense. So ignoring problems doesn't solve them. If so, I think government would probably be in a really good position all over the country and at our federal level. But this is, now, I don't know if we need to do this. I think the commission has been working together to, I mean, we're going to have to take action in one way or another. But we've been trying to find a way to save taxpayer dollars. Whether that's buying a building instead of building one from scratch where the construction costs are so high right now compared to purchasing on the open market. The commission has moved, um, or in the process of moving to the historic courthouse to allow the attorneys to expand into the existing commission chambers in this building. So we're doing everything that we can, but I think this, these deferred capital needs, this is why, because as you get to the end of, of this, I'm anticipating before you had a ten million dollar shortfall. Well, that's from our operating budget that we're talking about from all the departments. But these are what is exacerbating this problem.
So, but there's been nothing agreed to on these. These are just all speculative. I mean, when we got that ninety million dollar, you know, proposal, um, it, it didn't go anywhere. And, and so we're looking at other options that were significantly less than the ninety million, all the way down to twelve. So when I, when I, when I see numbers like this, I mean, they, they tell a, they tell a story. They tell a story of shortfall, but there are shortfall on pure speculation.
Right. And also I'm identifying as areas for the commission to consider when they're looking at creating a structurally achievable balance. If you decide that amount is zero, that's totally up to you. That's fine. Yeah, you can have that decision.
I, I would maybe qualify that statement, Commissioner Lee, with that, that five million dollar item is talking about a shortfall or a gap that's related to speculation. The other items on here, while still have not been approved, my understanding before I took office, I mean, the county purchase land for this north county facility, some of the departments have been talking about it. The IT needs, I, I wouldn't call those speculation, but I would agree that, that the overall architectural study was, there's still a lot to be fleshed out in that number.
Yeah, I mean, it's, but it is speculation. We don't know. We don't know what the numbers are. We don't, we haven't seen a plan for it. We're, it's just, I mean, twelve million dollars for a public works facility. Um, you know, we, we said we're gonna look at this campus first. Um, you know, we, we said we're gonna look at this campus first and we're gonna look at north campus second. We worked, we could be talking down the road on, on a lot of these as well before we get to any, any thought of that. So it, I mean, to tie them in and say that we have a shortfall of twelve point two million dollars and therefore we've got to make up that gap this year, um, you know, is, is pure speculation on it. I mean, because there's, there, this is, we're talking years out on these things. I know they have things on here in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. I, I don't see public works facility being in twenty twenty-one, the dates on the sides don't make sense.
Right. And again, we'll have a better idea of what the capital needs are when the capital plans project, after the committee's formed and that's presented to the commission and that's adopted. I might also suggest that administration building costs, even if there wasn't a desire or, um, to go out and bond for a totally new building, that's probably a wise prudent fiscal policy to be setting aside money through a depreciation charge. So even if something wasn't going to be done now and it's going to be done in the future, that that money is available at a future date. So the next area to talk about is fund balance replenishment. Um, as has been described, the last two years, the county has used about five million dollars in fund balance. Um, of course, as the county's revenues grow, the capacity for fund balance, um, to have a higher fund balance also increases. Um, the reason that it makes sense to have, um, a higher fund balance or to replenish that amount that's been exhausted is again, that's the county's emergency fund that's going to be used in times of economic downturn. Um, and it's also the county's, um, risk fund for emergency-type disasters or natural disasters that might take place. Of course, last year, we had, um, some fires that took place in the county that we felt the effects of the flood this year. Um, the commission went and lobbied both the state and the federal government um, for funding to help mitigate the cost of those items. And, um, as far as I know, I think that we received that funding. If the county hadn't received that funding, we need to be in a position to be able to fund those ourselves. And that would be through the fund balance. Um, the next item is what was talked about earlier with the fun, fund balance shortfall, um, currently for twenty twenty. But right now, the twenty twenty baseline budget is out of balance by ten point five million dollars. Just so that everyone is on the same page of what that is, that's the forecasted revenues for twenty twenty, which does include, uh, growth for property tax and sales tax. The growth of, um, sales tax is about three point five percent right now. Um, the county is at about six point six, a little bit under seven percent growth this year. Um, it includes the twenty twenty staffing plan, which includes the seventeen positions that were recently added to the attorney's office. And it includes, um, an extra two million dollars for, um, other costs um, that may result, um, from the increase in the attorney's office. This doesn't include it right now, um, any capital expenditures, nor does it include the additional asks from the departments, which is the next item to talk about. Um, so the items listed here are only the requests that impact or could impact the general fund. Um, other departments have requests, but, um, maybe they're a department in assessing collecting or, um, in the case of the health department, they may be bringing in revenue or grants to cover some of their expenses. Um, so the departments are listed here, the total of those requests are twelve point three million dollars, um, which again would be an addition to the ten point five million dollars the county is currently out of balance in the general fund. And, um, if there are any questions, I think that I would probably turn the time over to the department heads to spit, to speak more specifically to their requests.
A, a, and I think that this meeting is not necessarily a place for them to, we're gonna have all of our additional public hearings for the budget with each individual department. And they can go through line by line what those additional requests are. I think kind of to the extent that you've done, but in a much abbreviated form, this is a chance for department heads to, to say why additional funds in general are needed, why these types of programs are needed, how they've gotten to this point in their departments, um, and, and make the case.
Okay. Um, and I might suggest we just maybe go in order of the lists, so start with the sheriff.
Commission. Good morning, I wasn't aware we were doing this until just now. So what is it that you're asking about the budget?
This is just an opportunity for you to, to say, um, that you, if you feel like you really need the funding that you're asking for, why you feel like you really need it, in, in general terms. Again, we're gonna have a specific budget meeting for your department.
Yeah.
But this is really a chance, kind of as we've been talking about, for each department to endorse this budget requirement.
Yeah, so as we've went through our budget, we've had, uh, in our divisions, um, whether it's corrections or enforcement or judicial, emergency services, um, we've went down through, uh, many of the needs, some are carryovers that have been needs for many years that are on there. Um, some of them, as we went through and they came to my level up to the sheriff, um, were taken off. We've tried to be, um, as careful as we could as to the needs that we feel, uh, will move us forward. Um, as we look at our needs, we're looking at the general, um, the safety of the county. Uh, public safety is, is huge as we move forward as a county, as we continue to grow. I know this morning, there's been a lot of talk about growth and growth over the years. And as we look forward, that will continue to grow. And, uh, public safety needs to grow with that as we provide and keep Utah County a place that, uh, well, an amazing place to live as it is now. So the, the needs that we're asking for and as we go through them, uh, specifically, are very much needed as we move forward as a sheriff's office to, to keep Utah County where it is today.
Um, we appreciate everything that you do, everything that your deputies do to keep our community safe, all the employees of the, of, of your department. And, uh, we know it's, it's critical. From, from your perspective, is this, are these asks, I know you didn't take it lightly, like you said, you, you've asked for members of your department to remove certain requests even before you, you brought this.
Yes.
This is, um, important enough for you to perform your functions in your department that, even if it requires a tax increase?
Yes, they are, they are. And as I said, there are things on there that we, we have went without, um, that have been, uh, asked before and will probably continue to be asked as we move forward, they're legitimate needs. And then there are other things that, uh, that are, that are very, very essential safety items that we just can't move forward without.
Thank you.
So the only question I have is then, I want to make sure, and I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask every department that comes up here. So you're for the tax rate increase?
I think it's, yes, I think it's needed as we move forward as a county, um, being the second largest county, uh, in the state. I think it was very telling, some of the charts that we looked at today and where we rank, um, that, uh, to, to provide the services that our citizens require, to provide a, a safe place, um, to raise a family, uh, I think that, uh, we do need to raise the taxes as we move forward.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Richard Nass, uh, head of Department of Drug and Alcohol Prevention and Treatment. Uh, the request we're asking for really isn't to do anything more than to tread water, um, for the next year. We've had some significant decreases in, um, funding, um, from the state level. The assumption with Medicaid expansion is that, um, there would be a significant offset to state general fund money as it gets passed down to us. So remember, like you mentioned earlier, uh, out of our thirteen million dollar budget, less than a million of that is county general fund dollars. But we've lost a million four, um, in state revenue. And the Medicaid revenue expected to backfill, that is only amounted to five hundred thousand dollars this year so far. One of the reasons why is Medicaid expansion, um, gives individuals the opportunity to choose where they go. Not like the capitation, uh, contract that we've operated under for so long, that where they have to come to the county for services. So what that does is people will go to providers that are more convenient to them where they, where they live. Ours are kind of bound by geography to Spanish Fork and Provo and South Orem. Uh, most of the county population growth, of course, has been in the north part of the county and we don't have any services up there. Um, so we really are asking to, even with a significant increase in population growth, um, just maintain the system we have in place. Um, our job is the social safety net. So for those that don't, uh, qualify for Medicaid eligibility or other commercial health insurance, there's still a role for us to do what we do to provide, um, treatment prevention services. So remember, the majority of these clients that come to us for treatment are coming through the criminal justice system. So they come to the county attorney's office, through the jail, through the district court, uh, through the justice courts. And so we do a pretty good job at preventing and re- reducing future drug-related criminal behavior. You've seen some of the outcome charts that we produced, so, um, that's the primary reason why we're asking, um, for a three million dollar revenue increase this year.
Okay, same question, so are you for or against raising the tax rate?
That's an interesting question. Um, in terms of raising taxes in general, I would say no. But considering how this tax is, um, levied and collected, I would say yes. Because we still have to provide services for the citizens of the county. And if we don't have the, the funds to do that, our choices are, we have no choice, reduce services. So I think for us to maintain, um, the services the county provides, uh, along with the population growth, I think yes. It's beyond time that we should be raising taxes.
Okay.
If I can read correctly, it's my turn.
Right.
First off, um, I want to briefly state that, uh, as, as you both, as all three of you know, um, I've been in office.
I love that you think that he actually sits above you.
He does, yeah, I, 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 it's like a voice from heaven every time he speaks. And maybe that was suggested, maybe you could, when, when you're gone, that's the way it is for you too. I, I, I want to say that a, as the county attorney, my job, um, one of my big jobs is to counsel with, advise and, and, uh, the county commission. Uh, that's a bit of a tricky job because, uh, while it's one body, it's three very separate individuals with different perspectives, different, um, ideologies in some forms or another. Um, a, and, and I know that that's a challenge for the three of you as you try to do what's best for this community. Uh, I, I will say that what I have seen from the three of you, uh, to a person, uh, I want to publicly state and publicly applaud that I, that I understand that as each of you grapple with the issues that are, are, um, flesh tearing and, 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 you know, and painful for you. I, 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 I understand that each of you is looking at this, uh, with the public's welfare in mind. Uh, I've been impressed with your statesmanship, with your, uh, desire to serve the public. And, and truly, I, um, have been left with the conclusion that for all three of you, this is not about you, that this is about doing what's best for the public. And that can be answered in a number of ways, uh, depending on who's asking the question and answering it. And that's, um, and, and so regardless of how this budget process resolves, I'll simply state that I, I'm comfortable with that, that whether I agree or disagree with where you arrived, that I, I completely understand your motivations and how you got there. And I applaud them.
It's kind of you to say, and we will ignore the fact that your immediately next statement is going to be asking for additional funds.
Well, you know, I, I, uh, but don't, 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 don't lose sight of the fact that while it may be convenient, it is true what I just said. One of the things that frustrates me is that Utah County is a political subdivision of the state of Utah, which I have indicated before, um, is kind of the whipping post of the state of Utah, uh, as is all counties. Because m- my responsibilities in the county attorney's office, um, are, are, are twofold, if I can generalize them. The first is to take care of the needs of the county's civil functions. And, and as the civil advisor to the Utah, to, to Utah County government, uh, i- i- it, it really doesn't matter which department you line up there on that list. Every department up there, in one form or another, flows through my office. And so the, the, the functioning of Utah County as a government is, depends upon my office being able to function efficiently, effectively, and with the trust of the other, the other offices. Um, you, you have recognized that and you've taken care of me previously when you funded the additional lo- lawyers, some of which go to my civil division. And, and I want to a- a- again state what a huge victory it is, not only, uh, I think particularly for the residents of Utah County, where Utah have funded fifteen lawyers and two legal assistants, that, that's huge. The part that's frustrating about this is that the other portion of my job is to protect this community as the chief law enforcement official for Utah County, uh, en- enforcing Utah's laws. I represent the state of Utah. And by, a- a- as the representative of the state of Utah, it would be nice if the state of Utah would participate in funding what my duties are. And, and that's why I say that, that Utah County is the whipping post of the state of Utah, because they mandate what my job is, but they don't pay for what my job is. They require that you fund that. And, and that's not a, a funding mechanism that I find equitable, it's not a funding mechanism that I find fair. But it is a funding mechanism that I have to live with because I have a responsibility to, to protect this community through the, through, through the, through how I administer the, the function of prosecution in this office. The average caseload, uh, in my office prior to you funding these fifteen new lawyers was two hundred and seventy five, roughly two hundred and seventy-five cases per year. Um, the national average is a hundred and twenty-five cases per year, the ideal is ninety-five. You've allowed me to reduce that now down to roughly a hundred and fifty or a hundred and sixty cases per year. While we are still above the average, it, it's an, it, those are numbers that we can work with because we, uh, will do things in a way that's smart and efficient. Um, one area that I am particularly, um, troubled with is the, i- i- is our system overall in the sense that we need to preserve the, the basic underpinnings of our system, uh, and through the, by, by reducing the number of plea bargains we have in our society. Ninety-nine point two or three percent of our, of every case I file, we resolve with a plea bargain. And while we're always gonna have plea bargains, I'd like to, and while I'm not gonna set a quota, it, it, it would be wonderful if we, if we could reduce that number down to ninety percent of our cases being resolved by plea bargains, because that would make our system run better. And, and the funding that you've given me with these fifteen new lawyers will help me do that. The, 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 the thing that I want, the, the, the two points that I want to make here that, um, that I, that I still need your help with specifically is, um, my ability to successfully prosecute what is now one death penalty case and what very could easily likely become two death penalty cases in the coming year. Uh, a de- death penalty, there, there hasn't been a death penalty case in Utah County, uh, since the mid eighties in the Ron Lafferty case, and now we're, uh, we have one, which ironically occurred, uh, one mile into the borders of Utah County by residents of another county, victimizing residents of another county. But because it occurred in Utah County, the state requires that we pay for both the prosecution and the defense. That's a problem that I will continue to harp on, but nevertheless, it's a reality that I live with. And so, uh, i- i- what that's going to cost, we don't know. We simply don't know, and I, and, and, and I would feel less than responsible if I threw a number out there just to say a number. But it will, it will involve additional investigative costs. It will. costs, it will involve, uh, additional experts and things like that, and, and I, I think that we could just work with each other, uh, moving forward, uh, possibly amending the budget as we, a- 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 as those needs arise. The second area that I, um, want to, well, there's, I said there were two, there were three. The, the second area that I want to hit on is, is my investigations bureau. We have twenty-three roughly, uh, depending on how you count them, police agencies whose cases flow to my office. The primary function of my investigation bureau is to, uh, be the lead agency, as it will continue to be, uh, on officer-involved shootings. And, and, um, uh, that's important for the public confidence, because when the public sees that a police officer has been involved in a shooting, it's important to understand that, that the independence of the county attorney's office is the offices leading that investigation, that will continue. However, there are a lot of crimes in this county that require tremendous specialization, uh, white collar crimes, um, specifically computer-related crimes, sex crimes, that local agencies, um, for, for, for the sheer fact of their size, don't have the specialization and expertise that is necessary to follow a, a case from first report through prosecution. And, uh, and so my budget has included four new investigators, uh, one to put specifically on the death penalty case or cases, uh, because those are animals of, of, of different stripes than other cases, and three to increase our ability to be a resource to local, to, to the local police agencies who have white collar, uh, crimes or specific, other crimes of specified nature. That's in the budget, uh, I, I believe that that is money well-spent to protect this community and money that, that whether you get it in one way or another, uh, that, that'll be your call, not mine, uh, but it's money that my office needs to, to truly take care of the needs of my office. The last thing that I will say, um, on my needs, um, i- is, is quite frankly, an area in which my office is not doing a very good job, and that's in how we deal with our victims and our witnesses. Now, we're not doing a, a very good job, not because the three people that we have aren't excellent in what they do, they are excellent in what they do. They, they care about our wi- our, our victims, they care about the witnesses who have to show up to court, who oftentimes are one and the same person, the victim and the witness are the same person, but the sheer volume of what we deal with makes it impossible for, for three people to effectively handle. Uh, uh, we, we serve, uh, we will serve by the, we will, we will have come into our office th- in two thousand nineteen roughly thirty-eight hundred victims of crime. Every one of those victims of crime has an ob- we have an obligation to them, not only a statutory obligation, but a moral and human obligation, to treat them with respect, to see that their needs are addressed, to help them get restitution, if they need restitution, to, to, to hold their hand in a process in the court that is unfamiliar to them, and, and to help them to understand that part of this criminal justice system is there to serve them. We are not adequately serving them, because we have three victim-witness coordinate, victim and witness coordinators, and we have thirty-eight hundred cases a year. Do the math, it's just physically impossible to handle that workload, and so what occurs are that the, o- only the most serious of, of, of cases get handled. Um, a- a- and some of the cases, um, I, I would be embar- I am embarrassed to look at a victim and say, well, your case isn't serious enough for us to worry about, because every case is serious, every case is important. But i- if you have, for example, a, a financial loss of five or ten thousand dollars and our office is prosecuting that case, you're, the, the likelihood of you ever being notified by my office is almost, um, zero, because we don't have the people who can make the phone call to do it. Now, you've helped us tremendously with the lawyers, it's gonna, one, what I need to ask, and what I will continue to ask for, is for six more victim coordinators, so that I can ha- I've got, I've got three, and I have nine courts, I want to put one victim coordinator in every, and in, in each of the nine courts. Um, that would dramatically improve our ability to serve this population. Now, to get to the question that Commissioner Lee is about to ask me, and that is whether I support the tax increase or not, uh, let me a- address it this way. I support sound government practices and fiscal responsibility. It, it, it drives me crazy when governments drive the newest and the, and the greatest automobiles. It drives me crazy when governments replace things rather than wearing things out and doing without when necessary. And, uh, and that's, and that's one, I, that, I believe, is one of the hallmarks of this government in Utah County. We are not a government that has, uh, county parks that provide, uh, what many would call superfluous surfaces and benefits to Utah County. We, we are a government that tries its best to, to live in a way that's consistent with the principles of those who elect us. And, um, I know that we are pinching pennies and trying to do nothing in our budget that is superfluous, nothing in our budget that would be luxurious, we just can't make it work without more money. Now, my heavy lifting is to prosecute the crime in this county and to, and to preside over this criminal justice system. Your heavy lifting is to figure out how to pay for it. Um, I, I know that some of you favor a tax increase more than others, I know that some of you favor trying to find another county budget, my, my guess is that all of that is an important and necessary tool. A- a- and I would, I, I would counsel all three of you to cut where you can cut. If you can find areas in my budget where you can cut, you'll find me supportive of cutting that. Maybe I have seen some, ma- maybe you can see something that I can't see in my budget. Maybe you can see a blind spot in my office that, where you can say, well, can't we do this, can't we do that? One area that I will commend you for is when I said, I ca- I have to have more space, and, and rather than spending half a million dollars a year in space for the lawyer's office, you did a very self-sacrificing thing and said, we'll move out ourselves, thus giving us the space. I appreciate that. That wasn't an option that I necessarily saw. So if you can see something in my budget where we can cut, we are more than willing, in the spirit of team play, to do that. But as you, as you have gone through all of these departments and you have gone through the process and counsel with us, uh, and you can't find enough cuts to fund what's, what we all collectively believe is necessary, then yes, I would suggest that you raise taxes, because, because that combination of good government in, 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 in holding us accountable in our, in our responsibilities, that's a critical function of your compo- uh, component of your job. The other is, is to find a way to fund us, and if you can't do it by cutting, then I would suggest that you do it, you know, by a combination of the two. Any, any questions from, from any of you?
Thank you. I, I have one follow-up, just to, you know, on, these are, we're looking at the slide that has all the new requests-
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, you know, I don't know, I, I know that everyone's making their case that, why they need these, but there's going to be a lot of scrutiny on, on all of that, given this process, and we all see where we're at from a budgetary perspective, but even just your baseline budget, right, even every department's baseline budget, that just says the current staffing that they have with not a whole lot else, it's really primarily staffing, is, results in a ten million dollar deficit next year. And so, you know, given the fact that you're still asking for additional resources, I would imagine that you've been through your budget and that you, so I'll, I'll comment, do you feel like there are any cuts in your baseline budget that, people that you could cut from your current staffing plan?
I, I have already cut, before I gave them to you, I, I, you know, I, this is not a car negotiation for me, where I say, well, I'll offer this and maybe get this. Uh, to me, what we've gi- part of my responsibility is to give you what I believe in good faith we need, at the same time acknowledging that, um, I, I'm not the end-all perspective as to what I need. You have a, you, you have a, a perspective that to me is valuable, but I, I will tell you both, all three of you, uh, what I have told each of you privately, and that is, while I hope that you will find as much as you can to cut and to find and to trim, for example, I support selling the Equestrian Center, I support, you know, liquidating assets that are not necessary to the county function, while I support all of that, I, I don't know how you do this without a tax increase. I, I, I don't know how you do this without a tax increase, but, but then again, I don't know, I'm looking at one budget, uh, I'm not looking at everybody else's budgets, and so, you know, I, I also am aware of the fact that, you know, we have, w- w- we have growth, we have building needs, we have a lot of things, um, I'm, but, but I'm, I, I, I'm supportive of the concept of cutting, I'm supporting of the concept of a tax increase, and I'm supportive of, of both of those, primarily because I know the intent and the character of the three people that are making those decisions.
Thank you for your comments.
Thanks.
Josh Daniels, Clerk Auditor's Office. Um, our re- request right here, one point eight million dollars. Clerk Auditor are two separate statutory elected official functions. Under the clerk function, you have some public service things that we do, marriage licenses, passports, uh, we have the election, uh, division, which is, you know, the biggest bulk of what we do, there's some support that our staff does related to county functions of, of commission meetings and contracts and, uh, meeting minutes and things like that, so that's, that's the clerk bucket, and then you have the auditor bucket, which is all of the finance functions of the county. Um, so we've got, you know, the county budget, uh, finance and accounting, county purchasing, we have the internal audit division. So between those two divisions, the, the total ask here is one point eight. A big chunk of the one point eight is in the elections. We anticipate that the twenty-twenty general, uh, election year, which will include three different election cycles, you have a presidential primary in March, you have the general statewide primary in June, and then you have the general election, including, you know, the state, county, and, and federal general elections in November, that all told, we're looking at close to a million more than, uh, than previous. Um, one of the things that's changed in elections in our county specifically was one of the last to sort of jump on board is vote by mail, universal vote by mail, where we proactively print and mail ballots to all registered voters in the county, and, and then, you know, we pick up the cost of postage back to the county, and that's what all the other counties are doing, we've, we've, you know, transitioned to doing that the last cycle and had a lot of challenges with that, because, um, you end up running a dual election, where some of the benefits that you get from vote by mail, you don't see them until a couple years down the road, once voters are used to it and they utilize that system. So we have to run, you know, full-on polling locations to accommodate, uh, crowds and voters on election day, while we're also making it more convenient and hoping that they'll largely use the vote by mail system. We anticipate that they will in twenty-twenty, given some of the pain that was experienced in twenty-eighteen, but a big chunk of that is, uh, is from elections there. Um, we're seeing a lot of population growth in the county, a lot of new people moving in, a lot of new voters, we have two universities, uh, the footprint in terms of population or, or enrollment at those universities is growing, and that creates ongoing work burden for our elections office, as they're constantly updating and managing voter records and, and voter data. Um, because we have that transient population, we're constantly, you know, uh, changing addresses for individuals and, and taking in new forms and changed forms. Um, one of the things that's unfortunate about the way the voter registration system works in Utah, it's actually a very manual process. Uh, people in the community are able to change their voter registration status online, or so it seems to the user, if you've ever done that, what they don't actually realize is that one of our staff individually, manually, looks at that data and then manually changes the voter registration system. So there's always a quality control check every time those, those records are changed, and that's important for security, because we mail ballots out to voters at the address they give us, we want to make sure that the data's good and that, um, we're not just having some auto process that changes where we send ballots to. So, a lot of that is contributing to an increased, uh, increased need for the clerk side of our office, um, not to mention some innovations we're doing, uh, with, um, digitizing and, and making some of our services available online. On the auditor's side, um, as, as has been talked about, where do we find savings? And, uh, County Attorney had some good comments about, um, you know, he's looking at his budget, but he welcomed sort of insight into maybe savings that he could find. We propose to, to try to do just that with our internal audit function, um, growing the internal audit function slightly so that we can be a resource to all the departments, to help them analyze their budgets, to analyze their operations, and, and really just be a resource, how can we help you find savings? If that's i- i- something you want to look into, we want to make that a resource that's available to everybody in the county. Um, also, when it comes to the general financial operation of the county, uh, the needs of our office grow in line with the support level that we provide to all other departments. Um, as the county grows in population, as the demand for the services that our county provides grows, um, so also does the support for those services. So, for example, our purchasing department, uh, you know, the more purchases that take place in the county, the more assistance is needed from the purchasing department, which also then generates a work burden for the accounting department, um, and on and on. So, uh, that's the main driver for our budget and some of the things that we're looking at for next year. Um, in terms of the question about a tax increase, um, the, the short answer is yes, we understand that that is a necessary thing for the county at this point in time. However, the economist in me says, uh, what does a tax increase mean? Because we're not increasing, so if you think about your income tax, if you have the same income tax rate, if your income tax rate is ten percent, but your income goes up double, you pay double in income taxes the next year, but your income tax rate remained the same, is that a tax increase? You know, should, should as a citizen of, of, of our country, my income taxes to the federal government, should I pay a certain amount of income taxes, you know, a thousand dollars a year, and I pay no more than a thousand dollars a year? And if next year my income doubles, I still pay a thousand dollars a year? Um, if that were the system we had, that would be essentially what we have for property taxes, it'd be a similar system. So I think that changing the general levy rate for twenty-twenty, the certified tax rate, um, to an, an amount adequate to yield the revenue that you're looking at projecting, um, you could characterize that as a tax increase, but I think there's a little more conversation into, into that, because the legislature did not incorporate inflation capture in, in the certified tax rate system, and so, if you were to restore tax rates for Utah County properties to pre-year-two-thousand rates, that's what I would favor, you know? So just, don't, so if you do nothing, if the, if the commission does nothing on tax rates, and you say, we are going to keep a baseline, we're not even a baseline budget, we're going to keep the exact same budget from this year to next year, that would yield a reduction in the property tax rate next year. So, so I don't favor that, I favor, I favor the appropriate tax rate that equates to the revenue, um, that will fund the priorities that, that you think are priorities, I think that would be characterized as a tax increase in the Carmen, common parlance, but I think there's more to the discussion about how the property tax system works and, and what the revenue modeling has been for the county historically and what it should be in, in the future.
So Josh, that, that, that comment about tax rate, that, is that Amelia's sentiment as well, I don't know if you want to speak for her or not, but it's-
Yeah, and we've, we've talked about this, we're on the same page, um, she's, she's actually meeting with one of our, uh, vendors for our print and mail, because we're handling final details to send ballots out, they go out next week, um, but yeah, we've, we're on the same page on this, and, and we've dug into these numbers, and it's really opened our eyes to look at what's happened, uh, with property tax revenue for our county specifically over time, and basically never holding truth in taxation to increase the certified rate since nineteen eighty-four, as far back as we can find, um, I don't think that's really sustainable or- Um, I don't think that's really sustainable or wise for the county's needs, unless you make some really significant changes in your level of service. Um, I think if the county were to eliminate wholesale some of the services you provide, you could continue to forego sort of a truth in taxation process to increase the certified rate. I don't think that, that's really in the cards. Um, I think fiscal prudence requires, um, looking at a change. And I think that that change would be a correction from years of not capturing inflation. Um, and that's where, uh, you know, the longer you sort of put off a change, the bigger the difference is. And you create really tough decisions, so.
Um, a couple of comments about that. I mean, this is one where knowing just on a personal level, um, some of your political views and, and that of, uh, Amelia Powers, our clerk auditor, it, it speaks to, in my opinion, speaks to your level of professionalism and analysis that you've conducted in this process. Because I know that that would not be a decision that, that you make lightly. It also, in my view, does make the point that you're making in that there's a distinction that needs to be drawn between property tax and sales tax and income tax. For example, the most conservative, um, organizations, political organizations in the state would never support income tax increases or sales tax increases. But on the property tax level, they all acknowledge, there's not one group who would say that by letting the rate go down year after year by taking no action, that that's a sustainable path. At some point it gets to zero. And, and there's an acknowledgement there. Even the Utah Taxpayers Association acknowledges that they don't say that these shouldn't be adjusted because they know it goes down with no action. But their typical recommendation is that you operate on a fiscally disciplined manner with a lot of restraint on a conservative basis. And every four to six years, there's an adjustment. And you go back to the people and you go through it. They will say, you know, they, they helped implement this law. And, you know, the, the idea was not that you should never go to your residence and make your case. The idea was that you need to do that and you need to make the case. But they have actually regretted that as a consequence, you know, some politicians have just been scared to ever go make the case. And as a result, the counties or the municipalities have suffered. And so, uh, I appreciate the, the points that you made and all of your efforts in making this presentation.
Yeah, thanks. Personally, politically, I despise taxes, who doesn't, right? You're taking money out of my pocket. Um, but some of, in some ways, our, our hands are tied and we've seen this in our own office. You know, we've, we've said, look, we have these statutory requirements handed down by the legislature to perform certain services for the public. And if we don't perform those services, we can be sued. And in fact, we have been sued, um, you know, over disputes about the performance of those services. I don't know that we have a specific example where, you know, because of resources we neglected to do something and we got sued, but that's a possibility. And so, um, we don't have a choice in performing these services. And so, and that costs money to do that. And we've tried to find ways to do them efficiently in ways that, that save money. We've looked at our fee schedule to ensure that the public who is benefited by a specific service pays the cost of that service. Um, and I think those are wise things that we've done generally across the county and should continue to do. But I, I don't see a lot of way out of some of these things.
Josh, I, Commissioner Ivy, I just wanted to thank you, uh, for your comments here recently and for e- e- even in the beginning of the presentation. It's clear that your office has done a great deal of research. You've been diligent in this manner. And I love the approach of your office. You approach it with the correct principles, with sound financial management in mind and, and a realization that, that none of us like taxes and certainly are not a proponent of them having to be raised. But I loved your analogy, uh, with the income tax, right? If, if your income goes up and, and the percentage doesn't stay the same and you pay the same amount, is it a tax increase or not? I think that's a critical part of this conversation. And, and I just appreciate your office's efforts in this, in this and, and for all of the hard work that you've done. So I just wanted to make sure I expressed that to you and, and to all of the departments. As, as I've met with my individual portfolios, they've been diligent in looking at places to try and save and, and documenting and saying, look, here's how we're falling behind because of this rapid growth. And unfortunately, that rapid growth isn't paying for the increased demand on the service. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I'm just going to double down on that as well, just to, you know, this presentation represents a lot of work for many months to get to this place. But there's also a lot of other pain points that the clerk auditor's office has, uh, really spearheaded throughout this year. Uh, I see, um, Robert Baxter in, in the room. And from a purchasing standpoint, we have changed policies. We've added some additional resources to make sure that, that purchasing, um, is improved and is streamlined. And I, I know that's been a huge undertaking. Danian Jackson, who presented, has done an incredible job as our budget officer. And, and a lot of this analysis, you know, is, is through painstaking effort with each and every department kind of holding their hand through the process of coming up with, with what's needed. And she's also initiated the, a couple of key issues here that have led to this presentation, which are, one, outcome-based budgeting, which that's not really been introduced here, but it's something that we're doing where each one of these asks, as the departments have met with the commission and as they will meet with the commission, are tied to specific outcomes that they want to achieve. And then those are going to be measured to make sure that they actually are achieved. So, um, also the, the audit function is going to be improved. I think there's a commitment that, that each and every department will be, um, subject to a, a regular and formal audit. And, and then the last one is a multi-year budgeting process. Making sure that we can't, um, unintentionally kick the can down the road, that we actually are looking multi, multiple years. And, and yeah, has part of that made this conversation more necessary? It has. But it's also put us in a situation where we can do the right thing and govern effectively. So I, I'm grateful for all of the services of, of the department. And of course Amelia, who's not here, has been, uh, has led all of that and, and she's done an incredible job. And Commissioners, I don't know about you, we have more on the list. We've been through the vast majority of the line items.
I think we should, we should do like a one minute or something.
One minute and still have everyone else team.
Okay.
Yeah, I thought I was off the hook for a second. Patrick Warrell from the GIS department. Um, uh, I, I can't believe I'm fifth on the list. I thought for sure we would be further down, but it adds up. Um, I, I guess I'd like to echo a lot of things Josh says. As a, uh, information systems department, we are a service department, which means as different departments grow and they feel those, uh, growth pains, uh, in, a certain part of, um, those growth pains are transferred to us in an effort to, uh, help them meet their mandates, um, and, and, and their scope of work, at least in relations to computers and information systems. Um, as I reflected on this, I have several divisions. Uh, there's a couple of things. A GIS division is a strictly general fund division of mine. Uh, the rest of us are in an internal service fund. The GIS division, essentially, uh, we budgeted as a no-growth, essentially is a no-growth division this year. So there's not really, uh, any, any additional burden on the general fund coming from that division. Um, but as I look at the other groups, um, was when I was doing some research, uh, in the early two thousands, we were essentially the same size department as we are now. We had twelve developers in like two thousand five. Um, and today, we actually have nine. Uh, because three of them, uh, three of our developers are specifically now assigned to, uh, to the sheriff's office. And a couple of others have moved over to the GIS group. Um, the workload of the nine remaining has not diminished, as you could imagine. Uh, I think our reliance as a society and as a government on computers and information system has clearly grown over that period of time. And yet, my staff level hasn't changed at all, uh, to meet that growth. Um, we are feeling the pains now, particularly as I have gone around in the first few, um, months of my new position and met with most every department. Uh, departments aren't asking for less. They are coming with wish lists, things they want, would like us to do better. There's things they would like us to do anew. Technology is always changing, we need to stay on top of it. And I am no longer able to divide literal programming hours any further. So when a department comes and asks for more of my staff's time to develop something, um, it literally would have to come at the cost of another, of my commitment to serve another department, which, um, makes things difficult. So the majority of what you're seeing, uh, of the, of, of the increase are additional staff and additional network server infrastructure to serve the, serve the things, um, the programs that, that we are currently doing or are planning on doing in twenty twenty. Any questions?
Yep, you know my question.
Oh, sure. Well, like you say, the majority of my staff is non-general fund. Uh, however, even though I'm an internal service, general fund indirectly funds my department's activities. Um, I can, one of the pain points I see from departments when they ask me for things is that they don't have adequate budget to pay for them. Um, so to the extent that they would ask for more, I don't believe we see even a true demand given the ask because there isn't money to pay for the development of those projects. So I would say, to that extent, I support, uh, some increase in the, in the tax, uh, revenue, however you come up with that. Um, at least, uh, at least to cover those costs associated with it, with the, with this internal growth. I also am a taxpayer, I live in Orem, I've lived in Orem for twenty-one years. Um, I, I'm familiar with how hard it is to raise a family and pay your taxes. Um, so I say that with somewhat, um, I say that carefully because I know that I've been blessed with a steady job over the years and I know that not everyone has been. So raising taxes might be, and certainly is a higher, higher burden for some than others. But as an effort to really provide the services we've been asked to provide, both directly to my department or indirectly through other departments, I don't see another way. So yes, I guess I would say I.
Okay, thank you. Thanks. You can see that, I can see that my, my idea of one minute and others' idea of one minute is a lot.
Sorry.
A lot different. Should we go with the thirty-second version for the rest of these departments?
Let's try the thirty-second version.
Thank you, Patrick.
Thirty-second version.
No, thirty-second version. In fact, I'd like to do a filibuster and steal everybody else's thirty-second.
I can turn your mic off.
My, uh, my ask there, uh, revolve around the request for three positions. And, uh, I would suggest, uh, further that, that with those three positions where, if we're successful, uh, we'll still be your smallest department. I think we'll be your smallest department in perpetuity. And a lot of that has to do with the, with what we've been able to do, uh, and how we've been able to do that. We've involved technology where we've can. Uh, we have a history of going back, uh, back in the nineteen forties and how the county surveyor functioned back then. We've taken the best of what he did, incorporated what he did and, and, and on, on forward. And that coupled with the technologies has helped us be efficient. Uh, the primary thing that's requiring this right now is the fact that with Senate Bill one oh four, which is modified provisions in the county surveyor statutes, as well as, uh, another, uh, item on the horizon that is going to be federally mandated. It has, I think Commissioner Lee, you've heard about this, the, uh, new twenty twenty-two datum. Uh, the state of Utah is going to be required to comply with those, with those mandates. And as a political arm of the state, we've got to get on board with that. And, and, you know, whatever the federal government says isn't always, uh, the best case scenario. But in this case, I think this new datum is going to be a blessing to the citizens of the county, property owners and how we manage the county surveyor's office. So, uh, anyway, uh, I know my thirty seconds is up thirty seconds ago, but.
Yeah, you're good, thank you.
Anyway.
Keep going, whatever.
All right, okay. So, uh, I know, uh, nobody gets up out of bed and decides, you know, golly, you know, I'm excited for tax increase today. And certainly if the attorney wants to give up three employees, three new attorneys and we train them, I'll take them. I don't care. I don't care where that money's found, whether it's through a tax increase or where it's found. But I have to have those, those positions to perform what the citizens of the county have, have, uh, asked me to do. I can't protect property rights. I can't protect the public land survey system. It basically is the founding principle behind our whole entire tax system. That's got to be preserved. Uh, GIS mapping, what the recorder does, what the assessor does, how we define boundaries on the ground. Everything hinges on, on what we do, so. Uh, that's my response to the, uh, tax increase question.
Okay. Any questions?
You do care, you do care where we find it from, I'm sure.
Well, yeah, just, you know, I, I want to do my job, Bill, and that's all I care about. I want to be able to serve the citizens. If that requires a tax increase, then so be it. Now, before I go today, I want to give you two a copy of this. I, I sent my portfolio commissioner this, this morning, so I'm going to share this with you. It's similar to some of the other graphs that you've seen earlier today. It'll show some revealing things, so, anyway.
Thank you.
Gary Ratcliffe.
Okay, is that it?
Oh, no, it came back up.
Oh, us. Okay, go ahead, stand up there, navigate for it.
We're going to have to support this here in a few minutes when it comes back up. I will say that some of our new requests, though, I mean, one, I'll say, I'll talk about this at some point, but we have actually worked really hard this year to find a lot of cuts. And even in our own smaller department have found hundreds of thousands of dollars to cut. And some of this is reallocating some of those funds in, into next year's budget. And a consistent theme that we're hearing is, yes, we might need to, to do something to address the revenue, but also unfounded mandates and other state requirements are, are part of the problem here. And so a, a big chunk of our new requests relate to grant writing and lobbying so that we can make sure that we're getting appropriately taken care of at the state level. So I, I think that's going to be money well spent.
Okay, human resources.
Ralph Barnes, human resources. So, you know, attracting, retaining the best engaged employees is what HR is all about here at the county. You've heard from many of the departments. I think the departments in general have been, have been doing less, uh, or more with less for a long time. Um, most of my asks have to do with training and developing our employees. The asks that we've asked for are not necessarily for the HR department. They're actually for, you know, the benefit of the county. Uh, primarily to provide learning opportunities, uh, you know, learning management, um, uh, you know, training development of our employees. Uh, if we want to attract and retain the very best, uh, it's something we need to do that we don't do a very good job of right now. Uh, there's very little of that. There's not a system in place to track or administer that. So I do feel strongly that, that, you know, the I R, uh, the, uh, you know, ROI that we would actually get, even though, you know, two hundred thousand is a lot of money. It's, it's a, a small number in, uh, in relationship to what I think we would actually get in, uh, you know, return for the county. Um, our, uh, again, the intent is to make sure that we are able to, uh, recognize, you know, the performers of the county and hold those accountable who are not. And we can't, you know, do that effectively without our leaders and our employees understanding, uh, their expectations and what they can do, uh, as far as, you know, liability standpoint, you know, compliance. And that, again, is something we haven't done a very good job of. So that's really is the, you know, crux of what I'm asking for, is, is systems that we can have in place to, you know, train and develop our employees to a much higher, higher standard. Uh, I do intend to, uh, help our leaders hold employees accountable who are not satisfying the expectation and then those who are doing a very good job, hopefully they'll see some, you know, sort of recognition for that. The last thing is, uh, the way we've administered, you know, compensation in the past is. The last thing is, uh, the way we've administered, you know, compensation in the past, as far as, uh, you know, survey studies and, uh, you know, COLAs, I found to be very inefficient and expensive. Uh, one of the, one of the programs I've asked for is a, a, a more improved way to do an analysis of our, you know, compensation on a, a real-time, you know, targeted basis, where I think that each year we can do a much more effective job of, uh, uh, you know, compensating our, our, uh, all the employees fairly, but also accurately. Um, and as far as, uh, you know, the tax increase, uh, with everything we've heard today, the evidence that's been, you know, presented, I think that, uh, the HR department is in favor of that, although just like everyone else, we don't like to see those, you know, taxes increased, but, uh, I think it is necessary at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Couple of comments, just because I've had the chance to work with you, um, more closely. The, I appreciate what you're doing. I, I know that there's a part of this that is, um, as we talk about having a culture of excellence in the county, which I think every resident of our county would want to know, that their government workers are in a culture of excellence. Part of that is, um, making sure that employees who do not live up to that standard don't always have a home here. But the other part of that is, those who are, do have, you know, perform great services and are part of the culture of excellence, are recognized, are fairly compensated. And, so I, I appreciate that in your, I, I know for a fact, sometimes, uh, an HR professional can, can, can only do one side of that equation, but I think that, um, I appreciate the way that you're trying to manage that department in a responsible way for the, for the improvement of the entire county. The other thing you didn't bring up is, there are some historical compliance issues that, you know, we won't get into all the weeds of this, but that still requires a significant amount of man-hours and outside consulting hours that are eating up resources that could be used for good things in the, in your department. And they're just fixing clerical errors that create some real liability in, from the past. So, um, that's a perfect example of the amount of time that we're spending to correct errors of the past. Is, is another example for me of if you delay things and you kick the can down the road, it doesn't solve the problem. In fact, you might end up spending more money to fix it.
I can say that's a hundred percent true, in our case. Is there, is there any questions?
No, thank you.
Rebecca Martel, Children's Justice Center. I talk pretty fast, so I think I can stick to thirty seconds. Um, the funds that we're asking for are really to just fund two positions. And this will allow us to do two things that we are not currently doing, that we really need to be doing in our county. The first would be to hire an assistant director to oversee opening a satellite Children's Justice Center in North County. We have all seen the growth in North County. Um, based on our research, we're seeing that there's a hundred and fifty child victims that are underserved right now. And so, that is a need. We have to do this now. Um, my hope is that in the future, the county will build on, you know, the property out in Saratoga Springs. And in two to three years, we can, um, have a co-located facility, but we really need to open the satellite now. Uh, the other position would be an assistant clinical coordinator position. And two years ago, we started a pilot program with safe and healthy families up at Primary Children's Hospital to do trauma screenings on children, and not only screen the trauma, but also suicide risk. And unfortunately, what we're seeing at the Children's Justice Center is that fifty percent of the child victims that come through are at some kind of suicide risk. And right now, we only have one staff that's doing that, so we're not able, able to even screen half of the children that come through the center. Um, so I feel like this is something, again, it's, it's a need we have right now. Um, and to answer your question, Commissioner Lee, if it allows me to better serve the child victims in our community, then yes, I am for raising taxes.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for everything you do.
Commissioners, thank you for your time. Uh, I appreciate Commissioner Ainge's invitation in Department Head meeting to have us take some time during this meeting. And I'll try to be as brief as I can. The good news is, we're the second-largest department in the county, but our request is not the second-largest in the county, so. I guess that's, that's the good news. Uh, I did take the opportunity last time when we had truth and taxation hearings to attend all the hearings. As a department head, I thought I needed to hear those, what our citizens, uh, had to say. I guess I could have guessed what they had to say. But, uh, it was clear that, that nobody in the county is campaigning for paying more taxes. But understanding that, you know, as local health departments across the state, we try to compare our costs for the core public health services. And, uh, the tax funding we get, um, to do so, we have to take some things out to make sure we're trying to uh, compare apples to apples, or at least golden delicious to red delicious, as it's hard to, to standardize everything. But as we, as we look at that, you know, for example, some health departments do all of the aging services in the county. Or some do all the substance abuse services, some even do all the mental health services in the county. Uh, for us, uh, when in taking those out, for us, we have to take out things like our healthy lifestyles for the county employees, mosquito abatement and senior services to try to get an apples-to-apples basis. I'll just go through some of these rather than all of them, uh, in the interest of time. But Utah County, on a per capita basis, gets three dollars and eighty-four cents per capita for public health, core public health services. Summit County gets seventy-five dollars and thirty-two cents per capita for public health services. Wasatch County, uh, twenty-three dollars and fifty-six cents. Salt Lake County, eleven dollars and sixty-seven cents per capita. Davis County, fourteen dollars and ninety-one cents per capita. I could continue, but, um, in the interest of time, again, statutorily, the health department's required to provide services in both the incorporated and unincorporated areas of the county. Uh, our services are then impacted by the, the growth that we experienced throughout the county, as you've heard from many others today, and I appreciate all those presentations. Uh, but we continue to be conscientious. You know, in nineteen ninety-one, we had four employees in our administrative services for the Health Department. In two thousand nineteen, we have four employees in our administrative services for Utah County. I know many of the other departments in the county, due to the growth, have had to increase their administrative services and personnel. And I appreciate that, and that's, that's appropriate. Uh, with the, uh, demand now that's increasing in our, our audits for our grants and some of the things we're experiencing there, it's, it's a little bit of a crack for us, but, um, we'll continue to do the, the best we can. But most of our, uh, requests are funded by grants or, or some fee increases, uh, as been noted. Um, the exceptions are the one you have up there for mosquito abatement. You know, the growth of the county into new areas, which were previously untreated for mosquitoes because they weren't near enough uh, populations to treat, uh, has changed. We're having to treat more areas uh, of the county, and there's, and it, so it looks like that's not going to slow down at, at all, as the growth in the county goes into those areas. Recently brought to my attention when I was at a relative's home in Vineyard, and looked how close their home was built to Utah Lake and the area between their home and Utah Lake, which was basically impossible for us to get in and treat for mosquitoes, because you'd either have to, uh, uh, run through somebody's alfalfa field and smash it down to get staff in there. Uh, you know, you couldn't, uh, do it with air, air service, because you'd be buzzing their homes. Even drones probably wouldn't work too well as, um, the line of, you have to have a line of sight, so you'd almost have to be standing on their homes to do it. You could get in with an airboat, but of course, we don't have, have an airboat, so. So areas that we need to treat continue to expand and continue to be more challenging to get to and time-consuming to get to. And, uh, at the same time, the cost of insecticides and professional services continue to be increasing in that area. The other area I'll just focus on briefly, uh, our environmental health scientists. As we look at Salt Lake County, for example, in Utah County, we have fourteen environmental health scientists who are in the field. Uh, Salt Lake County, which is not quite double our size, has sixty-three doing the same services and protecting our, you know, safe drinking water, uh, proper wastewater disposal, food services, safe food, safe swimming pools, proper handling of used oil, tanning, tanning facilities, school inspections, and the many things that they do, even from complaints about, uh, uh, rat infestations, to bat bites, to, uh, animal feces, uh, et cetera, that, that they have to deal with in our communities. But, uh, but again, uh, those are the things we, we have concerns about. Our concern is very similar as far as the county on the use of surplus. Surplus only lasts so long, and as you have, fortunately, we do have some attrition and sometimes some extra fee collections that help with that, but again, uh, in that, that type of deficit spending, it seems to catch up with you sooner or later. Any, any questions I can answer? Okay, thank you.
Richard Mills, Public Works Director. Um, I'm, kind of nice to see that we're down towards the bottom of the list. Of course, our, our general fund, direct, uh, funding source is a fairly small part of our department. Biggest share of ours is internal service funds, and we have some others that are funded through other sources, like Denise had mentioned earlier in her presentation, our B-reel funds and such like that. Um, our, our asks are mainly centered on equipment and technology to help us do, do our jobs more efficiently. Um, in the eleven years that I've been here at the county, uh, we've, we've always heard the recurring theme of do more with less. I think that, that as a county, we, we do that very well. Uh, when you look at how we compare to other counties, uh, we, we do a lot, and we do it with, with considerably less people than our counterparts along the Wasatch front. Um, I think that, that we are, um, looking to have the, the best possible outcome for the county taxpayers at the lowest cost, possible cost. And I, I believe that's, that's true county-wide. Um, and I guess in the, to answer your question, I don't want to pay more taxes as a taxpayer, but I do believe this is something that is overdue, and I think it is time for us to, to consider raising taxes. Any questions for me?
I'm Helene Nokke from Records Management. Um, I am asking for twenty thousand dollars because we have approximately about seven thousand seven hundred rolls out at the Record Center of Film. And, um, we had, we used to have two, um, readers and printers, but the rec, recorders broke, and so they took ours, it's downstairs. But, that thing is so ancient and so obsolete, and you can't find them anymore. And if you heard the printer, it would be, it's scary. It is dying. And there is such a need to digitize all the film. Unfortunately, the state mandates that we still have film, because it's, um, the thing that lasts longest. But, um, for our general everyday purpose, we need to digitize. We could buy a machine for seventy thousand dollars. Um, but I know that's hard to come up with. Um, or we can have the state digitize twen-, um, five hundred rolls of film a year. And it's forty dollars a roll approximately. And that's why we're asking for this, because we feel like it's really necessary with our, um, decrepit machine to digitize this. And as far as wanting taxes raised, as a single mom for a long, long time, I believe that it has been needed for a long time. And it's, I think it's necessary.
Thank you, Helene.
Okay.
All right. Um, I think Josh.
I'll look at the.
So we're just going to cap off our part of the presentation, and then, and then, uh, kick it over, uh, to you for more, uh, discussion and those kinds of things. Um, so, let's see here, what's our next slide? Oh, so I just wanted to go back real quick, because there was some question about inflation. So, in the example of the sort of traditional, you know, kind of, you know, single-family home in Provo, um, that I had used earlier, going back twenty years, so back to nineteen ninety-eight versus last year, twenty eighteen, when we have a complete year of data. Um, what you see here, this chart shows you the value of, of the taxes paid by that particular, this is an actual case. So it took an actual home, it hasn't changed, and they paid about seventy-three dollars to the county portion of property tax in nineteen ninety-eight. And then I said, okay, how much did they actually pay in county property tax over time? And if we adjust that for inflation, what does that look like? So, the red line, the top line, is how much they actually paid in nominal dollars to the county, year over year over year. The blue line is if you adjust for inflation, what that means. What that represents is, over time, a reduction of about thirty percent of the value, the economic value in inflation-adjusted terms, that this particular homeowner paid in county property tax to the county. So, so today, that top-line number is ninety-five dollars and sixty-two cents. That's twenty eighteen. That's the end of the chart. Um, if you look in, if you look at adjusting for inflation, what, what I'm saying i- is, is that the ninety-five dollars that they pay today only purchases sixty-one dollars worth of goods. If you, you know, if you look at what's happened to inflation. So that kind of picture shows, property tax in Utah does not keep up with inflation unless you actually adjust the certified rate to capture inflation. The difference for our budget is sales tax. So, how do we make up the difference? Well, I think there's two things. One, we're not making up the difference. And two, to the degree that we are making up the difference, we're making up for it with prop, with sales tax. Um, sales tax as a rate, doesn't, the rate doesn't float like property tax, but the sales tax revenue is highly dependent on economic activity. So in a good economy, you'll get more sales tax. In a bad economy, you'll get less. What that does for your government expenditure expectations is they're a little more volatile, because they're based on sales tax revenue, which is why the property tax rate, um, is an important piece of the sort of government funding puzzle. So that, I just wanted to bring that slide up to show some more data, and this is so- something, I actually really enjoy this sort of economic analysis. Would love to kind of continue that conversation if you want to. Maybe we can meet and kind of dig into a lot of numbers and, and, and kind of get into that, but, that's, so that's what that slide was. Um, this la- so, so now this slide here is a total of everything you just heard. So all of the various requests and, and the different things that, that we've talked about. Um, so what this is, is what is the total scope of potential expenditure increases next year that you should be considering? And that's what this number is. So this doesn't actually take into account Commissioner Ainge's point about what is the right amount of risk management money to set aside. Um, you know, if there was even higher risk than the ones we talked about, this assumes, um, a million in, um, in judicial and attorney costs, particularly related to capital offense, uh, defense. Um, and then seven hundred thousand in more s- general civil risk. Um, but, you know, depending on where you come in there, but the total would be thirty-six and a half million. That would correlate to a twenty-twenty certified rate of point zero zero one five two eight. Uh, if we go to the next slide, so what does that mean for property tax rates in twenty-twenty? What does that mean for, you know, how you set the rates and your truth and taxation process? So, with a proposed budget increase of thirty-six and a half million, the total projected general fund property tax revenue in twenty-twenty would be sixty-five million. And that would impact rates, um, accordingly here. So you're, you're looking at the twenty-nineteen current certified rate for general government. You can add the ANC on, if you add the ANC, then that's the total in parentheses. In twenty-twenty, the proposed rate for thirty-six and a half million would be the fifteen twenty-eight if you added the ANC, which the ANC is not changing, unless you want to change the ANC rate. I mean, again, the commission would set the ANC rate, but assuming no change to the ANC rate, the total there would be sixteen eighty-six. So that's a net increase to the rate of eight-five-six in the rate, which represents a hundred and twenty-seven percent. And then if you look at the impact there on residential and commercial for the house of average value, which I think was, uh, three twenty-two or two, two thirty-three, um, that's what those numbers, so this and others would, would be the, what would go on the, sort of the postcard. Um, how does that rate compare to our urban Wasatch-front counties, uh, Davis, Salt Lake, and Weber? So that's looking at their general government rate. This is not including their ANC rates or our ANC rate. So, uh, our rate would be, if you, if you went this direction for twenty-twenty, the fifteen twenty-eight. Davis has got a fifteen sixty-two, Salt Lake sixteen thirty-two, Weber, uh, two, you know, twenty oh seven. So, that caps off the information that we had to share with you. Um, any questions that we can answer?
So am I reading this right, that essentially we could have a hundred and twenty-seven percent?
So am I reading this right, that essentially we could have 127% increase in our county rate and still be the lowest of urban Wasatch Front counties?
That's correct.
Still lower than Davis County and quite a bit lower than Salt Lake and Weber?
Yes.
And that the average homeowner would go from paying $156 annually in their Utah County portion of the property tax to $318?
That's correct.
Thanks again for that presentation.
Yep. Well, we'll bring it up here for discussion or a motion.
I have some comments. You know, as all of the departments came up and there was unanimous support for this, it, it reminded me of some of, one of the most frustrating dynamics this year, which is I, I believe in the principle of accountability. And there were a couple of, of scenarios where we had an issue with a county department. And I would expect to have just an honest dialogue about, okay, how did this issue come up? How do we fix it? And for the most part, I think we have great department heads, we have great leaders in our county. But on a few different occasions, there were conversations that essentially went like, they threw their hands up and said, I've been telling the county for years, the county commission for years, that we can't do our job on this budget. And they've ignored our requests over and over again. And so now it's not my fault if I don't do my job well, it's the county commission's fault. And that's a pretty toxic culture. That's a toxic culture that I hope doesn't continue at all anymore. I don't really appreciate those types of comments. I don't think it's productive or helpful. And yet, if it's a true, if it's a reality, it's hard to hold managers accountable if you haven't given them the resources to do their job. And so on that front, I'm appreciative of the collaborative process that we've had, the outcome-based budgeting that, that Danine is helping to introduce. Because in this way, we can actually demand a level of excellence. And, you know, next year, if those departments get, you know, an increased funding, now we can demand the level of service that, that people are requiring. And I do get phone calls from time to time, also from residents, saying that they are really disappointed with certain elements of our level of service. And so I, I think every department head has also said they were willing to do more with less. But at some point, that runs, that runs out. And I've, I've felt the exhaustion of each department head throughout this year. And I hope that in this process, they can see that, that we're, we're doing our best to provide the resources to the county, to just provide our essential government function, which I think that's all people are asking. And, and there are, there are some, some instances where we are not in compliance with even state law. And to me, that is the most basic level that, that we have to fund. Another difficult thing this year has been, you know, for me, I was elected in January and, or took office in January. And so we were, we had already budgeted into the reserves. So we were looking like this is going to be a year ending in deficit spending no matter what. And so that left me with no choice. It wasn't until this time of year that we were allowed to talk about balancing the budget in future years or adjusting the revenue. And so all year long, I've had a hat on that is cut, find areas that we can cut. And that's been really frustrating for some. I've received hundreds of emails from residents of our county that are concerned that I'm trying to cut services that they care about. I've received a lot of frustration from longstanding vendors and contractors of the county. And in some cases, I have cut. And not just cut, but completely eliminated entire services or functions. And I think that's what the residents expect of us, is that we do that. And yet, at the end of the day, that number that's been saved through all of those difficult conversations is still less than a million dollars. And now we're looking at these numbers that our clerk-attorney's department has served up. And the increases are so, so much outweigh those cuts. Now, do I regret those? Not, not at all. I think that that's important. We continue to find cuts and you try to make government more effective. But I'm not seeing any other path that cuts alone are not going to fund into 2020's budget. So I appreciate, again, all of those who have spoken to make this case on this. I think it really helped, helped me understand this better and hopefully it helps, helps the public and everyone involved understand the predicament that we're in.
I'll comment briefly, Commissioner Ange, I appreciate your thoughts. And Commissioner Lee, I'm sure excited to hear yours. Thank you to all the department heads, especially for the work they do. The biggest thing I'd emphasize is I am grateful to be a citizen of Utah County and a representative of Utah County because we keep our government services essential. And as I look at the things we do do, I believe they're essential services. And unfortunately, I just, we're growing so fast, I don't feel like the growth is paying for itself. We find ourselves in the exact same position we were last year. We've hoped for a different outcome, but here we are. And, and I think that at some point, you have to, when principles collide, like deficit spending and, and not wanting to raise taxes, you have to make a difficult decision. And, and I'm ready to make a decision that I feel is in, is very fiscally responsible and in the long-term best interest of the citizens of this county so that we can continue to provide those essential services.
Well, I have a completely different take on it. I've watched this process engineer itself to get to a certain outcome. And, and even with the comparisons that we have in here, it's, it looks like, you know, even some of the funding that we have that are, that are short-term to meet a certain area in which we've passed a policy for, is, is added up and increased in here in, in saying that we need this all now, right now. We need it all right now. And if we, if we do that, it's, it'll continue. So when we say we need $5, $5 million more and that's, that's projected into the tax rate increase, so that's every single year that that's going to continue and all those others too. I mean, there's, there's a lot of things that are concerning as I look to the presentation. This is the first time that I've actually seen this presentation, so it's, I have to run through it and digest it. I'm, I'm going to be voting no on this. 120% tax increase is unbelievable. And I think that it's going to be an interesting process to see how it goes. I'll just state this, I, I don't, I don't really have an appetite for balancing the county budget on the backs of the taxpayer's back. If we don't first, and there was a little talk to this, the commission doesn't first, have the courage to hold the departments accountable. Second, if we don't have the courage to project revenues on the, on the projected revenues and hold that accountable. Third, have the courage to find efficiencies, you know, in, and probably fourth, have the courage to cut programs that are losing money or not fulfilling their purposes or missions. And fifth, have the courage to sell unutilized properties. Sixth, have the courage to address vehicles and the use of vehicles in this county. If we're not willing to go through and, and start, and I think these are first, that we do that, we, if we're ignoring those, we're ignoring those and then we're going to balance the budget on the back, the backs of taxpayers who are going to pay a price. I know Gary says that he'll, you know, anything that will, whatever it takes to, to, to make this work. But I'm sure that if we came and said, well, we're going to do it on, on your retirement, that'd be a whole different conversation. So I'm going to be voting no. And I think I have an obligation to present a different side and different, a, a different thought to it, which, which I will prepare and, and, and present at the appropriate time.
So a couple of things. There, there was no motion, so there hasn't been a proposal, so.
Right, but I'm, I'm just signaling that.
So you're just no, so let me, let me ask you a more simple question. How do you intend to fund the 2020 budget?
I'll, I'll get that proposal for you on how to do it.
Well, there's a couple of problems with that. One is we have a statutory requirement to provide notice if there's going to be any sort of rate adjustment. The other problem is you've already approved the 2020 budget. I mean, you've approved increased spending in 2020 already, but you just haven't identified how we're going to pay for it. That burden's on you. If we want to be fiscally responsible.
No, I, I haven't approved any, the 2020 budget. What, what, what part of the budget have I approved?
Well, I mean, two weeks ago, we had our county attorneys ask for a two and a half, a, a new expense that was going to be a $2.5 million increase on the 2020 budget. And you voted for that.
I did.
And we've sat through at least one public meeting on the budget. And I haven't heard you indicate that in terms of the baseline budget that is resulting in a $10 million shortfall, according to Danine, that there's any cuts in that that you see?
Well, no, there was plenty of cuts that are proposed that, that they're there. And there's, and there's more that can be done.
So I have not heard of one net cut proposal from, from you or anyone else. I'm happy, I'm thrilled to hear any cut. In fact, I have, I have voted for any proposed cut up until this point that any commissioner has proposed. And I've proposed additional cuts that no one has voted for. But here, you're saying that you, you're going to get to it. This is the deadline.
It's not deadline. Did, did you hear me say I wanted a one-third cut in, in the vehicles in our motor pool?
I didn't hear one-third, but I heard you say that you wanted to cut in, in the motor pool. So, okay, so that's example. Do we know how much that's going to cut?
Well, I mean, we're working on, we're working on that to see where that's at. I'd like to see, I'd, I'd like to see a reduction in, in the jail population according to what we're doing when it comes to the, the attorney side. That's the reason why I was willing to go there and to go to that point because I think that we can get a 25% reduction in, in the jail population. That's about $9 million.
Okay, but so first of all, we can't really control, we can control the budget of the sheriff, but it's, it's his responsibility for public safety. But more importantly, even if there were a cut there, that takes some time to implement, right?
Right.
So how is that going to pay for expenses starting in January of 2020?
Well, budgets aren't all spent January 1st. Budgets are spent throughout the year. I, this, this $10 million in the sense of this property sale that we have, or possibly whatever that comes out to for that, for that property is another one in there. There's an offset on that, but it, we're not looking at, you know, we're not looking at that to have that into the, into the equation. Again, that will happen if it happens next year. So we have to go through the process to get there. The, the, the argument they have here with inflation, the taxpayer association disagrees with that. I've talked with them.
It's not true. I've spoken with them as well and they, they don't disagree with that on the property tax side.
I, I've talked with them as well and they said it's kept up. So there's, there's, there's a conflict on some of that. Some of the, some of the, I mean, you can word it in such, such a way to get an outcome to it, but there's overall as well. So we, yeah, those are discussions we're going to have to have. We've, we've had our first meeting, this is kind of our second meeting. So we've got a lot more meetings and a lot more work to do.
So do you think that you're going to be able to find enough cuts to balance? I guess the question is, what do you think the 2020 budget looks like? And how are you going to fund that? Because that's a, to get to a balanced level, you're talking about 10 million, 12 million in cuts, at least.
Okay.
So do you think you're going to get there on cuts?
And we have to sell the property, which could be what?
The sale of property, I'm not sure of the value, but let's just say that that could be that amount. My understanding is that's going to take nine months. I've also understood that that sale of the property, you know, best financial practices, you don't use one-time resources to fund ongoing expenses. So, you know, that's one thing, if we were using that to pay for our, our Provo campus or something, but not to pay the bills on our government operations.
And then, and then we have, when we look at those charts and we see where we started to dip into the red, big parts of that, a big part of that was that the sheriff's department came to us and took out 4 million, 4-plus million dollars in revenue without any offset in expenses, zero. And without that, if we put that $2.5 million into those prior years, it's a whole different looking chart that's there, plus this year too. There's $2.5 million on that. So, I mean, those, those, but we're not considering that. We're throwing, throwing a chart out there that says, oh, it's deficit spending, deficit spending. I'm, so I'm saying that if we don't have the courage to have, to have management actually look at these things and hold it accountable, we're going down a whole path of saying 125% tax increase. I don't think the people in the, in Utah County are going to appreciate that at all. I, I, I look at, you know, some of the single moms and you're going to be forcing some people out of their homes. That's going to happen.
So this is just purely political? And I think you're ignoring math and you're ignoring basic economic principles?
We had $15 million out of balance last year. But we went back and we trimmed it. We haven't even gone through a trimming process. This is, this is showing a scenario of everything.
Well, yeah, and, and, but I'm not, that's, that was what they were proposing. It's up to us to decide what we're comfortable. So that's why I'm asking you, how, how do we want to fund it? And, you know, you talk about courage, but you talk about the ICE contract. Commissioner Ivy and I were not there for that. Sheriff Smith was not there for that. You're the only one who was there for that.
I've been talking about this every year.
And when you talk about courage, last year, I attended the property tax hearings. And last year, your comment was, let's just wait and see, let's not raise taxes. You did not identify in the public meetings into any specific cuts. Now you're telling the same thing, you want to wait and see. And you're talking about courage, but you haven't put one cut on the table.
Oh, my heavens.
And, and you're not willing to do what we need to do to fund our government.
No, no, Tanner, listen. Last year, when we had this conversation, we were looking at a chart and the graph. And the graph was going up. We, we spent less last year out of the reserves than we did the year before. And we were going in a direction that according to the analysis that we had, if we were able to hold the line, we would see ourselves get to a point to where we're not, we're not in this deficit spending, if you want to call that, or although we have surplus that, that covers it. But still, it keeps going, we keep spending. And now we're looking at it and saying, oh, yeah, our proposed budget on this thing is way out of line. But the proposed hasn't even been reconciled according to the actual. We don't even know where we're at. We're saying 3 million or 5 million, but now we have the $3.3 million that's in there. So we're, it's all speculative and we're saying, this is a worst case, the sky's falling scenario. We need to raise taxes 127% or whatever that number is.
And first of all, I haven't recommended that at, at this point in time. And, but this is what this conversation is for, is what we want to do. Now, you've picked little bits and pieces of a whole entire presentation that you think there's some wiggle room on or there's speculation. And I, I don't disagree with all those points. I think that in that number, there's a lot of things that we can pick apart and say, we can do without that, we can do without that, we can reduce this. But the question still remains, how are we going to fund it? And you have not provided a solution of how we're going to fund our government in 2020.
Well, that will come. That will come with a full plan on this because I wanted to see what, what was going to come out of this. At one point in time, we're talking $6 million, possibly 6 million. We haven't been in these discussions together. You've been, you know, behind the scenes, working out all these numbers and everything. And so here's the proposal that comes forward.
I've worked with all of our departments, we've all worked separately. Because of public meeting laws, it's not like we can negotiate these things.
I mean, the only numbers, the only numbers that I saw out there was a 6 million, possibly a 10. And then, you know, now these others are going. And then like I'm saying, you're trying to fund areas in which there, there could be one time to get us in, in compliance with the codes or policies that we already put in place. But you want to fund the whole thing upfront. There's no reason if we've got a hole that we can't take time to dig out of it too. We could do it over a period of years to get there with holding the line. We know we're at 3.2 possibly on projections, it could be 6, could be higher. We don't know, we don't know where that's at. But we could, we could start with, let's first do some cuts. Let's go back to funding levels that make sense. Maybe we, we look at it in a sense of, okay, we know we're going to, from here on out, if the funding increases are going to be what we have in, in, in place in our projections. And we can open up the budgets during the years if there's more and put more money into it. Instead, we want to blow it all the way up there and say we're comparing with other counties in which the other counties, the other, when we compare like that, we can compare for hours and days on that and say, we're the lowest. We should be one of the lowest. Salt Lake County should be the lowest in efficiency basis and everything else. But they're not because they've chosen to, to grow their government and to grow their, their, their economy on that thing all the way out. Because we're the lowest, just as happenstance to the other ones don't. I think we should always be one of the lowest.
So I just cannot reconcile, to me. I just cannot reconcile. To me, I think you really have a heavy burden here to explain how on earth you can approve a two and a half million dollar increase in 2020 in attorney's office if you don't know how you're going to pay for that.
It was, it, it's offsets. So, we'll, we'll get there. I mean, let's pass what you think needs to be passed today, and-
No, I mean, this is, this is such a joke, because unless you are approving, this makes no sense. You, you are saying that you're going to come up with a plan. Today is the last day to come up with a plan that has an adjustment in the revenue.
No, because this is not final.
So, hold on, hold on, and you said, you said one-
This is just, this is just a cap. So, if you want to put a cap on it, put a cap.
Right.
If I come with a plan that makes sense all the way through, and it says, this is what we can do, and this is how we can get out of that, then would you go for it?
Absolutely, that's what I want to do.
We have time from now till the 12th of February.
But before we even set a number, you said you're against it, and that's a consistent thing, is that you're always against it. And so, what I want to see is some good faith effort to actually balance our budget. That's the responsible thing to do. And so far, I have not seen that. This is your opportunity to say that you're committed to doing that.
No, I, you know what, I, in talking, in talking with our, our financials, people in the county, I said, you know, I can go through and have, and we can do a tit-for-tat on this thing, and you can have a proposal, I can have a proposal, but I don't even know what your proposal is.
Right, we don't, I, I don't have one yet.
Right, so here, well, I mean, proposal in the sense of this presentation, you had a presentation up there. Now, I could have an opposite presentation and say, okay, now let's spend the next three hours and talk about a different presentation. But I thought, you know what, it's best probably to hear out and see where we're going with this thing, see what can be reasonable, but if we're looking at 127% tax increase, I'm a no on that.
Sure, and, and, but just, you know, you've had five years to address the budget issues in Utah County. Okay, so this, this isn't, this shouldn't be a timing issue about today, or waiting to hear what you, I don't know what you're waiting for to put forward a plan to address our budget challenges in Utah County. So, this is, this is a, a major challenge. And, so is there any, is there any level of adjustment that you would vote today for a cap?
Um, uh, right now, no, I'm not prepared to vote for an increase in tax rates.
Bill, just a question, wherein in the auditor's numbers do you have concerns, particularly with just the 10 million over our base? Like, where in there do you think that, that our auditor has misprepared those figures?
And, and if I may clarify that, Nathan, so, in other words, throwing out the things you've already specifically objected to, the building, some of these other issues that you think are speculative, just the baseline budget that Nathan's referring to, this 10 and a half million, what's wrong with that?
Just the baseline budget?
Yeah.
Well, again, we can go back and look at the baseline budget and see, and go all the way through line item by line item. I have not done that. I don't know if you've gone all the way through every single line item on the baseline, or if you just accepted it.
I've gone through with all of my portfolios, line by line, and I can tell you for certainty, and we just had them all come up here. And if you thought there were 10 and a half million dollars of cuts, that, they were talking about their new request, so that takes up to 20 million. They weren't even talking about their baseline. If, if you felt like there were 10 and a half million dollar cuts, then you should have told every department up there that they need to fire a, a big chunk of their employees.
Well, that, that's, again, let's go through this process and let's see where, let's see where it comes out.
Well, Bill, Bill, we're going through the process right now, right? That this is the process, and I'm asking you specifically, in that 10 million dollars, where do you think, where can we save? I, I, I'm just as happy as, as anyone to not have to do this.
Okay, so, that's the question.
But in that 10 million, where can we save? And, and I've had the opportunity, as Tanner did, to sit down with my portfolio people and, and, you know, this isn't even getting into their additional asks, many of which I think are justified to maintain our level of service. And, and so I'm going, man, we're already starting off in a big hole here, which is what I was concerned about last year. That's why I wanted to just simply freeze our rate last year, because I was concerned this was going to snowball, which it has done. And, and so I'm, I'm asking you to, to help me see somewhere in that 10 million that, that Tanner and I and the, the clerk auditor's office has overlooked that we can save. Where is it in there?
Okay, we'll get there. Let, you, since, since you, you feel like you've got the handle all the way through on, on where you're at, go ahead and pass it um, at the level that you feel is needed and necessary, and then we'll, we'll continue the conversations till December 3rd.
Well, if we don't have to do it today, I'm, I'm happy to, to listen to your proposal.
I'm not prepared with the, with the proposal today. Like I said, I wanted to listen to the proposal that was, that was coming forward first and see, and see where we're at, so that we can adjust appropriately. I don't even know. I don't know what cap, what cap you're thinking about. What, what caps are you thinking about? Are you at the 127%? Are you at a different level? What levels are you thinking? It's hard to propose something when I don't know where the caps are.
Well, I guess that's, you know what I mean, for me, I think that the minimum is we have to do the 10 million to, to fund our baseline budget. And we can debate back and forth whether we should look at the option for the additional ask. But I think at a minimum, we have to say, we're going to make sure we have the capacity to fund our government based on, on the baseline budget that's been presented to us, uh, moving forward.
Well, then make that motion.
And, and so I think that's the minimum. I'm happy to talk about the additional 10 million, because I think there are some staffing needs uh, from, from several departments, even like the surveyors department, that need to be addressed, that are additional asks. Again, if we want to maintain an appropriate level of service, I mean, the, the reality is, with our staffing levels where they're at, we have department after department that are falling behind. We have a recorder's office that's falling behind. We have an assessor's office that's falling behind. The county surveyor's office is falling behind on their monuments. And, and so if we continue to not staff them appropriately, which requires more money, they're just going to fall further and further behind, and I think these are areas that are, are constitutionally mandated, essential areas of government. Our surveyor's office protects our property rights, you know, and, and our recorders have, have laws that they have to adhere to on timelines, and if we just can't fund these positions to keep them, you know, functioning, I, that's concerning to me. I feel like we're not fulfilling our responsibility to the citizens of the county.
So, so what, where's the cap level that you're comfortable with?
Uh, for this particular meeting, I'm happy to set it high so that we can peel it off.
But, but, I mean, I, I guess I'd come back to you, is there, because this is always a room for us to, to come to a good solution, is there any level that you would support, Commissioner Lee?
I'm not right now, I'm not, I'm not at any level.
But, but when you say right now, though, that, I mean, we're, there's a statutory deadline.
Yeah, I, I realize that, and I also realize that the both of you are, are, you know, looking at, at going ahead and putting that, that cap rate up there, so go ahead and do that. We can have those conversations, and we can peel back if needed and necessary. So, we-
So, Commissioner Lee, why are you unwilling to support us with this? So, we can be unanimous and say, look, we're going to work together as a unified front to, to make sure your bu, the budget is balanced, and we're going to work together diligently to do all we can to cut it. I guess that's part of my question. I don't understand why you're unwilling to just say, you know what? Here's the raw numbers from a clerk auditor that I believe you endorsed, right, and, and strongly supported in our campaign, and she's the one saying, here's the reality of what we're facing. So, I, I can't understand why you're not willing to just stand with us and say, here's the reality, but we're going to do all we can to get that number down hopefully to nothing.
Yeah, okay, so, um, because I'm not there, I'm just not there to do that.
I, I just, I have a fundamental problem when I listen to last year's meeting, and it says, no specific cuts were recommended, and it's, let's wait and see. And then, earlier in the meeting today, you said, oh, some of those expenses are years out. And now you don't have any real plan that you're putting on the table. So, I, I hear kicking the can down the road, and you've been in this position for five years, and then you gave us a lecture on needing the courage to do something to fund our government. What have you done to demonstrate courage to fund our county government?
So, let me ask you some questions. Are you willing to take the 2.5 million dollars out of the sheriff's budget?
Right off the top? Well, here's the thing. Sheriff Smith was not around when that contract came. I'm still learning about that. Let's talk about that. We, we've got a 20, we're talking about somewhere, I mean, a very high amount of dollars we're spending, two and a half million dollars. We can get through that. I can find it somewhere. In that issue, I realize that was a problem. That was not under this administration's watch. If you reduce the revenue and you don't see a corresponding decrease in expense, that raises a lot of questions in my mind. I'm with you on getting to the bottom of that. And I've asked the questions of that, but guess what? The sheriff, he has a job to administer that function and oversee corrections. And he could come up here and speak to what he's willing to do to address this issue. That's a great example of, of things that we could, we can do and that we can do from now until December. But, you know, you used a two and a half million dollar number, and that's, that's not going to solve the problem, but there might be a couple more, but guess what? Two weeks ago, you approved a two and a half million dollar increase, so even if you're able to save it on the sheriff's budget, we're still just at break even. So, that's my problem, is I'm not seeing another 10 million. And, and when you ask if I'm willing to cut, I mean, I, I've stood up here on a few different occasions and advocated for cuts that were really painful and had to do so on my own. We had Miss Utah County here, right? I, I've talked to vendors in the county that have been here forever, and I've advocated terminating these contracts and moving forward to save money. And these are things that I don't want to do. I've got hundreds of emails this week that, that you know about, that I've, because I was talking about cuts, because everything's been on the table all year long. That's what I've been doing all year long. And you know that. And so, to, to, to not have something that you're putting on the table right now is, and yet ask us to trust that there's cuts, it, it just, that doesn't make any sense to me.
Yeah. Well, motion's in order, whatever motion you want to do.
So, do you want us, do you want Commissioner Ivy and I to pass this motion so that we can continue having this conversation, but you just want to vote no for it, or?
And that's up to you. I mean, you're going to have to vote your conscience, whichever way you want to go with it.
But that's the other part of this that's interesting, is that sometimes I feel like, again, to the courage discussion that you brought up, ultimately, maybe you feel like the government's going to get funded, but you don't want to vote for it? Is that what's happening?
No, no, listen, I've, I've, I've been doing this long enough with, uh, with other commissioners as well, where you think you're going down a path, and then it never goes down the path. I, I've had department heads come in and say, you know, you have to fund us at a million dollars more, or else I'm going to, I'm going to, you know, I'm, I'm resigning. And my thought was, we'll resign then. And, and yet, no, there's, there, there was no courage to say, oh, yeah, we're going to hold it accountable. I, I've, I've, I've seen it where we talk about this, we're asking for it all. We want, we want to fund the whole thing. We, we have a presentation here that, in some respects, has a lot of subjectivity to it and, and a lot of, uh, you know, skewedness to it, and so I, I don't know where we're at. I've, I've, I've seen it before, where we just go back and forth and we fund it all, and we just say, no, we're not going to have the courage to stand up and hold anybody accountable for it. What have we held accountable so far? What's been accountable? Who's been held accountable?
All the departments. I mean, first of all, we haven't approved a budget yet. They've just come through with their asks. But with my portfolio assignments, I've gone through line by line and asked them, why do you need this? What outcome are you going to achieve with this, with the additional asks? No, and they're, and, you know, in some cases, I've kind of said that their baseline budget is, is okay, but, you know, for example, um, when I had a conversation with the sheriff's department, I noticed that they had a lot of unfilled positions, and some of those were rolled into the budget. And so, I basically treated those like new requests and made them justify those as well. So, this is what I've been doing all year long, right?
So, what would you do, what would you do if, if, if you didn't get this tax rate increase?
Well, there have to be terminations if, if we don't get this tax rate increase. And, and actually, I was the only one who voted against the 15 new hires. And, and David Levitt said that if the tax increase doesn't happen, he'll fire the employees. So, that's the first, that's the first group. Is this new batch of attorneys that was hired, they need to be fired. I mean, these are the tough decisions. You know, Commissioner Lee, all year long, when you talk about, like, it's almost like between now and the next meeting, you want to come up with cuts, but from January 1st, forgetting past years, from January 1st until today, you have already increased the budget of 2020 by approving staffing plan changes and not making cuts. By default, we have approved an increased budget. Now, we just need to figure out how we're going to pay for it. It's a fair analysis. So, all right, it sounds like this is coming down to you and me, Commissioner Ivy.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to just entertain a motion and move forward.
Um, so, I think that the Davis County number is obviously kind of a ceiling. We're going, no matter what, we're going to remain the lowest taxing county, urban county along the Wasatch Front. So, that's one natural ceiling. Obviously, like you said, a floor is going to be the baseline budget, that, that 10 million. I don't know-
I, I can say this, Tanner, from my experience, we've been relatively capable of finding about half of the additional asks to, to put off, right? And, and so that's, that's a rough number, um, and, and some of those, I think, those additional asks are justified, some of them are not. As we've worked down through the last two years and having all the department heads come together and look at the other departments' ask, they've been able to work in a collaborative spirit that's helped us, you know, trim those additional asks down significantly and say, you know, we can really function and, and keep going here. And so, I'm reluctant, you know, I don't feel comfortable going 20 million, um, because I'm, I'm comfortable that we can find some in those additional asks to, to cut back out.
Commissioner-
And I agree with Commissioner Lee. If we look at the leasing options, and, you know, trying to pull down our fleet, we're going to find some additional savings of a couple million bucks here and there.
Totally agree. I hope between now and then, we can find a lot of savings. So, so basically, we're saying the, the baseline budget plus half of the new asks, but then there's the other, uh, reserve replenishment and some of the capital needs items that had built up. So, so Josh, if you were to look at that spreadsheet and you were to just reduce, tell us again what, what the exact number is at the end of your presentation?
The 36.5 million?
36.5. So then, and what would that be when you, if you just take off half of the new ask? So, that's, I guess that reduces it by six.
Correct.
So, that gets to, to 30 million.
Yeah, I mean, and, and to some of the other things, you know, like, we talked about capital. Okay, well, there's not going to be an expenditure this year. Part of the, the, the way these numbers were built, so specifically to the, to the building one, um, on the slide that talked about building, the assumption was that you would put money in over time, I can't find that slide. It was, that's like a 20 to 30-year payback period, that you'd be paying, uh, you know, bond payments upwards of $5 million. Part of the problem is that there is no fund balance that was assigned as a savings vehicle to replace the building. So, um, that's one of the fiscal decisions, I think, that you want to make, is, do you want to continue to do that in the future? Whether you build a building now and bond for it and pay $5 million a year, or you do something else, do you want to change the way in which you budget your expenditures, and you want to actually save money for future capital expenses? Because, you know, and there's been discussion about that capital plan, capital projects plan. And I, and I, and so far, the policies that you've enacted, you're moving towards a situation where you want to be saving money for capital projects into the future. And, and so that's partly built into here. So, if you don't do that, you're not going to be doing that, right? So, that, that's, that's a big chunk of this as well.
So, at 30 million, is that, what's the, what's the percentage year-over-year on that one?
Let me, uh, give you a quick, so you're saying, by percentage, you mean tax rate?
No, I mean, the year-over-year. You had it at 127 on the 36 and a half.
Yeah, so I've got to first calculate what, what tax rate would be required to generate 30 million of revenue versus 36 and a half million revenue, then compare that tax rate to the previous tax rate.
Okay. While he's doing that, I think the other point, um, you know, Commissioner Lee, you made the point that we can open up budgets, but I just want to clarify, we are at a deadline here to set any adjustment um, so that we can have the conversation for the rest of the year. The other thing is that's the only thing that's going to change the ultimate amount of money, if I'm understanding this correctly. So opening the budget will just deal with allocating the money, but it's not like we're going to have time in the middle of the year to take any revenue raising activity. Correct?
Right, right.
So it's, you gotta-
The reason why you'd open up the budget is, let's say that our forecast of 3.2 was low.
Sure, some additional, so additional resources-
Additional revenue came in because we underestimated the amount of sales tax or property tax. The sale, the property came in at, we, we were estimating here and it came in higher. There'd be additional revenue.
Yeah.
That's the reason for the opening up the budget.
So, yeah, funds can come in, but we wouldn't be able to change rates during the mid of the year.
Slightly true, Tanner. We could actually reduce the rate. So if funds come in and we're exceeding, uh, exceeding our projections, the rate could go down, we just can't increase. Just for like a point of clarification. And I think that's something all of us would be excited to do if we did have to exceed the rate this year as we go through this process. And then our projections are off and we get to that point where we actually finalize and set that rate. If our projections are ahead of ourselves and revenue increases from sales tax or something are up, we can certainly bump it back down at that point in time, but it could never go back up or exceed that.
Got it.
We actually don't set the rate till March? I think it's March. June?
June.
June, right?
Okay. That's a helpful clarification.
So, I don't have the percentage yet, but just so you know, you'd be going from a current rate for general government of 672 to a new rate of 1376.
I think it's 105.
Yeah, for purposes of the resolution, uh, you're required to state the percentage increase of the property tax portion of, of the revenue. And, uh, the 30 million will represent a, uh, 104.73% increase.
Yep, that's correct.
Okay. Perhaps as a starting point for a cap, we could set it just at the, uh, 28. If you scroll back up, Josh, I'm looking at. We could set the cap at the 28 6, basically the same as the 2019 budgeted. 28, 6, 4, 4, 5, 7, 5? If that's the number that-
And that makes sense to me.
Yeah. So just set, just set our additional ask at the same as the, as the 19 ask.
So just double, 100% is what you're saying the increase would be?
Right, that is.
Yeah.
So I'll, I'll move that um, we approve regular agenda item number five, filling in the numbers reflected in cell C13 and D13 represented here on the chart. And for the basic levy, the new rate, wherever that is, C18 to be filled into the resolution.
I would suggest those numbers be stated in the minutes so that it's clear what those dollar amounts are for the resolution. Which, to my understanding, would be 28,644 dollars. Represent-
575. Excuse me, excuse me.
20 million?
28, so, so, yeah, so those numbers are 28,644,575, which is 100% increase and a basic levy or an estimated rate of .001344.
Okay, I will second that.
Okay, got a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Passes two to one. Commissioner Ainge and Commissioner Ivy in the ayes and Commissioner Lee in the negative. All right, we need, for closed meetings, we need number six, seven, and nine.
You mean there's more meetings?
Yep.
Um, I move that we strike regular agenda item number eight.
Second.
Got a motion in a second to strike agenda item number eight. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes three, zero.
Move that we approve and set a time, date, and location for this location immediately following this meeting for the items set forth in regular agenda items number six, seven, and nine.
Second.
Got a motion in a second to approve and set a date, time, and locations for items six, seven, and nine on our regular agenda. All in favor, say aye.
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 That passes three, zero. There are no work sessions. Is there any public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll move into our closed meetings.